Are we ready, everyone?
Yes. Good deal, Jason.
Well, with that, it's five thirty, so I'd like to welcome everyone to Planning Commission tonight. It's December second, two thousand twenty. About five thirty. We're holding this meeting over Zoom. I would like to remind everyone that if you have public comment, to please enter those items on washingtoncity.org slash meetings. Before the item comes up. And we will begin the meeting, and my best Commissioner Fitzonfield to offer the implication, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're so very grateful for this opportunity to meet as a planning commission. We're also very grateful that we can meet in this in in this free country in which we can discuss matters, civic matters, in which it affects each other. We also are grateful for this part of the world in which we live in, and we ask that we may be able to have civil discussions and that we may be able to discern those things that matter in the city's business, and we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
General, please rise. I pledge allegiance to to the Republic, which stands one nation, liberty, and justice for all. Before we start on the agenda items, I've noticed that the city manager, the new city manager, Jeremy Rad is here. I just want to give him an opportunity to introduce himself officially to everyone. I don't think he's ever done that, so just like to let him do that and turn a little time over to him.
Well, hello, everybody. I watched the last meeting on YouTube. I wasn't able to watch it live, but you asked if if anybody knew who I was or where I was, where I was from, and so I just thought I'd spend a few minutes and say hi. It's a weird time we live in with coronavirus to not be able to say hi in person and to get to know you, but I've been here a month now as your city manager and getting my feet wet and getting to know Washington and the areas. I haven't been able to meet as many residents as I would like, but hopefully when this is all over, I can meet all of you in person and and other residents of the city, so thanks for what you do on the Planning Commission. I don't have to tell you, but it's a pretty thankless job, and it's a, it's an important job. And you do good work for the residents of Washington in difficult situations sometimes, so thank you for what you do. Anyone, anyone have any questions for me?
Well, this is Commissioner Holly. Jeremy, thank you for joining us and saying hi tonight. Welcome to the most beautiful Washington City. Good luck.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that, and it's been fantastic so far, so everybody's been very kind and hospitable, so thank you for that, and and I will I will watch excitedly about what you do tonight, so thank you.
Well, we appreciate you being on, and we look forward to meeting you and working with you and and helping the Washington City grow and improve and what we can, so thanks again, and with that, let's move to item one A, that's the approval of the agenda for December second, twenty twenty.
Commissioner Holly, I make a motion that we approve the agenda for tonight, December second, twenty twenty.
Second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Holly and a second by Commissioner Fitzonfield in favor. Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzonfield?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Musso?
Aye.
Commissioner Smithson, aye. Item two is the approval of the minutes from November fourth, twenty twenty. Any everyone have a chance to review those?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, I don't have any updates. This is Commissioner Hanson. I make a motion that we approve the minutes from November fourth, twenty twenty.
Commissioner Holly, I second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, a second by Commissioner Holly in favor of approval of the minutes. Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Musso?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzonfield?
Aye.
Mr. Smithson, aye. Item four is approval for the twenty twenty-one Planning Commission meetings and cutoff dates. Any concerns or questions? If not, I look for a motion on those items as well.
This is for item nine A. I live within
Let's get the declarations and extensions, so let's do that before item four. So yeah, declarations and extensions were conflicts.
For item nine A, I live less than a mile from the proposed agenda, from the agenda item.
Okay. Item seven A, I have the firm that I work for did the work. I I don't have any, I didn't have anything to do with it, but I do want to disclose that.
And I'm glad everybody's here tonight because on item nine A, my partner actually represents Tag and Go, therefore I see a commission on this if it ever goes through, so I probably will be out of it. Is that right?
Yeah. You'd want to abstain from that, as I'm taking.
Yep.
This is, this Commissioner Hanson, I don't have anything for tonight, but maybe if, if Council, if Mr. Starkey's on tonight, maybe if he could tell us now that the council machine was new, what our purpose of abstaining and when we should be abstaining might be something to talk about real quick and review. If he doesn't, it's my understanding. Oh, he is there.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry, I've got feedback online.
Um, so
let me I've got to turn off my phone first. Hang on, let me speak. Let's see if this will take me off. Okay, so declarations, so um, can you still? Can you still hear me? Okay, so to declaring where you have a conflict, so by state law, there are there are specific ethical provisions, statutes in which a a member of a board or an elected official may not participate, which tends to be, it's a little bit technical because of just of how they state it, but generally speaking, if you have a financial interest in the matter or an ownership in the matter, not only do you need to declare that abstain and abstain from participating in it in terms of your planning commission appointment, but you different members do it differently. Sometimes they'll just sit down because to make it clear, they're not going to participate in it for anyone watching either in person or online. And in those cases, however, they may declare that they want to participate in the discussion, but they would clearly need to step down from the podium at that point and be in the audience and make it clear that they are any comments they make or we, comments made on behalf of themselves as the owner or a financial interest in it. The, the less specific ethical rule deals with with what is probably, what one thinks is appropriate in declaring a conflict, and oftentimes you can just declare the conflict if you don't have an ownership interest or one of those technical interests by statute such as an ownership and those types of things in the item itself. You may declare it, but that doesn't mean that you're not participating in it. But by declaring it, at least the public is aware of the potential. It avoids the public getting the impression that somehow a planning commissioner failed to declare what interests they had in it, but then participated anyway, but you can declare it, sometimes, in fact, a number of the commissioners will simply say, it's within like the block. The piece of property on item five A is within a block of where I live. I just want to declare that. Planning Commission has been specific about that, but let's be clear. Everybody on a city council or a planning commission is going to be within certain distance of almost any piece of property. If you feel like you need to declare that to make sure that no one feels like you failed to disclose a potential appearance of a conflict, then go ahead and do that. Otherwise, it is only the financial interest, ownership interest, those things, that you absolutely can't participate by state law. And in those cases, declare it, make sure the public's aware of it, make sure you get on the record so nobody claims that you had undue influence. Does that kind of help Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah, it does. If you, I wanted Commissioner Shield to hear it, but if you have a financial interest, then that automatically or that automatically makes you eligible to participate and vote?
Well, if it's enough of an interest, so, and I mean statute, I probably, I could pull the statute up and go over it. Although, we have a training once a year that we try to go over all of the things about our public hearings, and Kathy may have a good kind of shtick she uses on that when she does her training, but the interest has to be of a significant nature. I mean, if if Apple Computer comes in and builds a building in into city for its retail store and you own Apple stock, I'm pretty sure you don't have to disclose that, but if it's a, if you're a partner of a real estate agency and you have the listing for a particular piece of property, you better declare that and probably not participate in it because of that finance, clear financial interest in it.
Let's use Commissioner Shields as an example for tonight. If he did have a voting say it tonight, is that something because of his partner? Does that negate him from the, from being able to participate?
From a personal standpoint, from my standpoint, in order to avoid the appearance, I mean, that's, to me, that would be a clarinet in which you wanted to avoid the appearance to the public. You may not have enough of an ownership. You may just be a real estate agent. But to the extent, to the extent that you're going to make money from that being approved, because that means a sale will go through. From my perspective, you clearly ought to disclose that and not participate, unless the public know you're not participating. I thought Commissioner Shields did it perfectly that way. That Commissioner Shields did it perfectly in disclosing it that way, so although, so Commissioner, you wouldn't participate then in that discussion either, and online, it becomes a little goofy online, the way we do it, because it's on because it's being streamed live or with a hesitation there, but because we didn't put like a, you know, you know, bones and skeleton across his picture in there that shows he's not going to participate, but it'll be on the record, I think, so I think that's what's important.
All right, thanks. Sorry, Commissioner. Thank you for your time.
Good question, Jason. Thank you.
No other extensions or conflicts. I'll move to item four, the approval for the twenty twenty-one Planning Commission meeting and cutoff dates.
Commissioner Holly, I make a motion. We approve item four A, the dates for the Planning Commission meeting and cutoff dates for twenty twenty-one.
Commissioner Hanson, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Musso?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzonfield?
Aye.
Mr. Smithson, aye as well. Motion passes unanimously. Item five A is a plat is a file plot. This is consideration or recommendation to city council for Shooting Star Phase Three. Located approximately seventeen fifty South Black Brush Drive. The applicant is Western States Ventures SGLC. I'll turn the time to Drew.
Thank you very much. Can everybody see that okay on their screens?
Yes.
Good. The applicant, as stated, has requested approval of the final plat for the Shooting Star Phase Three subdivision. This particular subdivision is proposing twenty-five lots and the area coverage is eight point four three acres. The zoning at this location is a single-family residential, ten thousand square foot minimum, or referred to as the R one ten zoning district. The preliminary plat was approved back on February twenty-fourth of two thousand seventeen. Staffs reviewed the request, the proposal, and finds the proposed final plat indeed conforms to the approved preliminary plat. Staff therefore recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the final plat for the Shooting Star Phase Three subdivision onto the city council, and that's based on the findings subject to the conditions, which are the standard five. Now, I appreciate, before we move on, anybody ask any questions? Commissioner Musso caught me before the the meeting started, and we do, I need to let Bush and Gudge will know, they got a misprint on this road. This one right here cannot be Rio Virgin Drive because it's the road that's to the the west of this that already runs through Rio. Runs through the subdivision down there, so so we do have to look at that and get that name fixed before next week, so we need to have Bush and Gudge will come up with that and get that corrected as soon as possible, so other than that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for staff?
Commissioner Hanson, I don't have anything.
Commissioner Holly, I don't have anything.
No questions, and we feel comfortable moving forward on this with that minor change with the one plot, the name change on the road. I'll look for a motion.
I do have a question, I'm sorry. Do we need to make that a condition, Drew? Condition six, that they fix that name?
If you want to, go ahead and put that in, and I can say, I'm not going to let them go, you know, next week unless I have that.
Yeah, nothing's complicating it. Standard five is good.
So that Rio Virgin doesn't connect to the Rio version we have?
Well, that's what I'll, I'm going to point that out. Let me bring it up. You can see Rio Virgin Drive is down here
Yeah.
on the screen, the one that they're calling is over here. So this is the one that heads down into Scenic Sunrise subdivision.
Right.
And they labeled this one here with that name, so, and their boundary is right here. For my arrows going up and down, so so we'll get that corrected.
If nobody does not have anything else, this is Commissioner Hanson. I make a motion that we approve, I'm sorry, we send to city council. Let me back up. We make a recommendation for approval to city council on item five A. Shooting Star Phase Three located approximately seventeen fifty South Black Brush Drive, applicant Western State Ventures. In accordance with the, and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. I'm not going to list that last one as a condition. It sounds like it's going to be done.
Commissioner Musso, I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Musso?
Aye.
Mr. Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzonfield?
Aye.
Mr. Smithson, aye as well. Motion passes unanimously. Item six A, this is a subdivision name change, consideration to recommendation approval to the city council. Subdivision name change from Red Waters Phase Four through Six to Riverbend at Sunrise Valley Phases One through Three. Located approximately eight hundred South Countryway, the applicant is Melon LLC.
Thank you. As stated, applicants just request an approval of the name change, and that's the process they have to go through once it's already been approved as a preliminary plat. Again, they referred to it earlier as Red Waters Pod Two, and it would have been phases four, five, and six, but they wish to change that, and I fully understand why. The current name, isn't that that appeasing, and the new one is very appealing, and they want to change that to Sunrise, the Riverbend at Sunrise Valley Phases One, Two, and Three, which consists of this, what was referred to as Pod Two of the overall area. Staffs reviewed the proposed name change for the preliminary plat and finds it conforms to the PUD zoning, the subdivision ordinance, and also to the zoning ordinance of the city. Staff therefore would like to recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of the name change for the preliminary plat from Red Waters Pod Two Phases Four, Five, and Six to the proposed Riverbend at Sunrise Valley Phases One, Two, and Three, and that on to the city council. And that is, that is of course based upon the original findings and the original conditions that were approved for the project. And I'll be glad to answer any questions the commission might have on this name change.
So, quick question, Drew. Are they selling this off to a different builder for the retail side of it?
You know, I'm not sure. I think we've got represented from Bush and Gudge. Actually, this is a person who picked it up from the original developer. The Melon LLC, but I'll have Adam, can you hear us and can you address that?
Uh, yeah, can you guys hear me?
Oh, Adam's on there too. Great.
Bob, Adam, I'll take either one of you.
Hey.
Go ahead, Adam.
Uh, so yes, we are selling, so it is two different owners, and homes is on the northwest side of Countryway there. Southeast side here is S and S Homes, and as they've kind of decided as they're doing these things, that they don't want to be the same subdivision name until they're you know, trying to differentiate and kind of add the app Sunrise Valley, so it's the same area. People can know that, but you know, they can differentiate themselves a little bit.
Okay.
Thanks. Other questions for staff or the applicant? If not, I'd entertain a motion on this name change.
This is Commissioner Holly. I'd like to make a motion that we pass on to the city council and recommend approval of the name change for the subdivision currently titled Red Waters Part Pod Two, excuse me, Pod Two. Approximately eight hundred Countryway. The applicant's name change Riverbend at Sunrise Valley Phases One, Two, and Three with the findings and conditions listed below.
Have a motion.
Second that.
Motion of second. In favor of the name change, Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzonfield?
Aye.
Mr. Musso?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Smithson, aye, motion passes unanimously. Item seven A, this is a public hearing for consideration or recommendation to city council for Richen subdivision. Final plot amended request to subdivide existing lot two into two separate lots located approximately twenty-seven fifty East Washington Dam Road. The applicant is Michael Labor.
Thank you. As stated, applicants requested amended final plat for Richen subdivision. And it's basically gathered on Lot Two right here, which is going to be split, and number three is coming off of Lot Two. So that's what's before you tonight. Again, the reason is, is they want to just create another lot. A home is being currently built on Lot Two, and they want to develop this one for maybe future home site for, I think, the applicant's father at a future date, so he just wants to take care of that now. Lot Two will will be split, and again, it will have two point five five acres in size, and Lot Three, the new lot will be one point one eight acres in size. The original Lot Two was three point seven three acres total. The staffs reviewed the proposed amended final plat and finds it conforms to the the R one, the RA one zoning, and also the subdivision requirements and other ordinances within the city. Therefore, staff would like to recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of the amended final plat for the Richen subdivision amended Lot Two onto the city council based on the findings and subject to the conditions in your report. And sorry, that number six should not be on there. I didn't get that erased, so please ignore condition six has nothing to do with this subdivision. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. And yeah.
Any questions for staff?
What's the access to Lot Two then? Is it coming through Lot Three?
Yeah, yes, that gray area that you see.
Right.
It is a, it already was an easement, you know, a dedicated, a recorded easement.
Yeah.
But I needed to make sure that they made it an ingress egress access easement as well, so the darker gray is that that comes off of Washington Dam Road and then comes through and then butts in right here at Lot Two, you can see
Right.
down here on the bottom.
That house that's currently being built on Lot Two, is that the one that sets up way high?
Yes, it's up on that ridge up here, where the Lot Two is.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so
So Drew, when you have an easement going through the property, that does not diminish from the overall size of the property because it is an easement, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's owned by Lot Three, the land is.
Right.
But they're giving whatever the easement is recorded as, so there, in this case, there's going to be two of them. One is a ten foot, as you can see here, it's a ten foot wide, or is that? Let me see if that is ten foot. Yeah, ten foot wide electric easement. And you can see the recording number, but then we've added a twenty twenty-four foot access easement on this hashed out area, Lot Three.
So as long as they don't build in the easement zone, then it doesn't affect their building envelope at all then, right?
Correct. And the reason it has to come through here, if you were out on the property.
Oh, yeah.
No way to get to Lot Two off of Washington Dam Road.
No, it's, you couldn't get there.
No.
Elevator.
That's what, that was my option, yeah.
Thank you, Drew.
You're welcome.
Questions for staff? And or motion? Oh, wait, this is a, this is a public hearing, so.
Yes.
Do we have any public comment on this?
There are no public comments on this item.
Okay, so I would, at this time, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on seven A.
I'll move.
I second.
A motion by Commissioner Holly and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Mr. In favor to close the public hearing, Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzonfield?
Aye.
Commissioner Musso?
Aye.
Mr. Smithson, aye. The public hearing is closed. Further comment, discussion, and or motion on seven A.
Just one other thing hit my brain. So when they come in and widen the Washington Dam Road, is that going to affect the lot size for Lot Number Three and throw it below the one acre minimum required?
No, I think, Brandon, I want you to step in. You kind of know what's going on with this. There's an agreement between the owners and the city about when that road gets put in, but I think that's why it's the one point one eight is to accommodate for that, which will be taken. Brandon, is that correct?
Yeah, if you look at note number four on that plat right there, we already have a recorded document with the owner. So lots two and three have already signed a deferral agreement that they'll sign over whatever property you know, that we need for the, they'll just deed it over to the city. And in turn, the road will be built at not their expense. It'll be built with a job. And so I don't, I don't feel like it's going to encroach into that property enough to take that away on Lot Three, where we, they've been, they work very closely with the engineer that's doing the road design. So I think we're going to be okay.
You just don't want to put it in a situation where they're going to have to have it grandfathered or anything like that, you know, you want to just keep it above the one acre. So, okay.
This is Commissioner Hanson. Just a quick clarifying question. I believe you mentioned, Drew, that the purpose of this Lot Three in the future is for a relative, I think you said father, father-in-law. If for any crazy reason that didn't play out in the future, where these were two different family members altogether owning these lots, and there was some kind of a discrepancy between the two of them, could Lot Two connect to Washington Dam if they wanted to and paid for it? I know it's very steep, but if they dug it out so they had their entrance, is that possible and feasible for them to do?
I guess, I guess the quick answer is everything, yeah, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to act like I'm an engineer because I stayed in a Holiday Express last night. And if you ask an engineer, everything's possible, so, but there probably, there could be. And if you ask an engineer, everything's possible. So, but they're probably, there could be more than likely, but it would take a lot of earthwork. You know, they'd have to be building some retaining walls, you know, around there and let that come up. But yeah, it is a possible, absolutely. But with this easement on here, and it's recorded as such, it, it's in. They would both have to agree to have that easement, uh, uh, removed. Not just one party can have that removed.
Meet right there, our access management, I don't think we could meet it on that turn with the driveway right there on Lot Two.
I'm just, the worst case scenario would be if it was like a Hatfield McCoy situation. I just, for some reason, these two lots hate each other. You've got one guy driving through your lot every day, multiple times, or whatever the situation was. Where I was wondering if there's an out, if that was the worst case scenario that took place, if there was some way to fix it in the future.
It would be very difficult because of what Brandon pointed out with the site distance, but yeah, if they wanted to knock out some of that hill and get rid of the site, again, you know, I think a lot of things are possible, but with this recorded, doesn't matter if they hate each other or not.
That's a-
You know, that's a legal, that's a legal easement that they, you know, would have to make sure they stayed on it the whole time. Um, but that, that right there, because it's recorded, they have to let them, even if they hate them.
Yeah, okay.
This Commissioner Holly, that's a good question, Jason. I was thinking the same thing. Family feud, whatever, access. Good question and thank you for clarification, Drew.
Anything, like I, I don't think it's going to happen, but just in case, you know, what's the out on Lot Two? What's the-
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at two probable different owners. Fifteen, twenty years, I mean, properties, you know, the thing is, the properties always stay, people come and go.
Yeah.
And that, that will happen someday, I can guarantee it. You know, that it'll be not family, it'll just be two different people owning these lots someday. But that's why easements are put on there. And so if they don't like it, whoever ends up with Lot Three, then don't buy or move, you know?
Yeah, alright.
But-
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions and/or motion?
Uh, this is Commissioner Hanson. I make a motion that we recommend to City Council, Item Seven A, for the approval of Item Seven A. The Reichens, is it Reichen's or Richens?
Richens.
Richen subdivision final plat amendment. Request to subdivide existing Lot Two into two separate lots located approximately twenty-seven fifty East Washington Dam Road. According to the subject, and court is subject to the findings and conditions listed in the staff report.
Commissioner Holly, I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hanson, second by Commissioner Holly. In favor of recommending approval. Um, Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Musso?
I had just one other quick question. I'm sorry about this, guys.
That's all right.
So for, for sewer out there, is there sewer or are they on septic? And can they get a septic permit if, on Lot Number Three, if they're on septic?
Right now, everything out that way is on sewer, or on septic, I'm sorry.
Is on septic?
Yes.
Can they get a septic permit for that lot?
Uh, that's up to the health department. That's not up to us. Um, Lot Two did. Everything out there so far has, I'm not sure. Uh, that, we write a letter of, um, to the, to the owner and they take it to the health department. That, that's up to them to decide. Uh, sewer is working its way down that way. I don't know how long it'll be that way, uh, that far out. I don't know.
Well, do we have a minimum lot size for a septic system in the city?
It's, it's, it, it goes with the, with the size of the, or how far they are away from a sewer main. What, what decides if they can, if they are within three hundred feet, they have to hook to the main.
And the size of the, the lot is, it's based on soil type, so um, I would anticipate they could, they could get enough perk in that area to, to accommodate it.
Okay.
Because I know, I think it's a short term. I think it's an extremely short term option in this case, but I'm-
Okay, I just, it, it just came to my mind that, you know, what do you do for, what do you do for utilities on that? So.
Extremely quick in that area. Yeah, generally the rule of thumb, Commissioner, is one acre, you know, for a septic system. Well, they can go, they can go on smaller ones if your percolation test comes back extremely well.
Right.
But if you get an acre on-
Yeah.
Yeah, most acres don't have a problem.
Okay, alright, that's, other than that, then, I'm aye. Thank you.
And with that question, is there any change in, in our voting?
Haven't.
Okay, um, then Commissioner Musso, did you vote?
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, aye as well, uh, motion passing unanimously.
I didn't vote yet. But I, yeah, but I thought, I thought aye though.
Alright, I apologize.
It's alright.
The motion still passes unanimously. Item seven B, this is a public hearing for consideration and recommendation of City Council for stately subdivision final plot amendment to amend lots twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight to the correct property lines consistent with what is actually constructed. Located at six sixty-three South Staley Drive, we got up in this Georgian Captain Staley. Thank you. Applicants requesting approval as a stated and amended final plat for lots twenty-five, six, seven, and eight. The reason as stated also is the amendment is requested simply to reconfigure the property boundary lines on these four parcels and their relationship to each other. Over the years, property lines were unintentionally crossed by each lot, and this amendment makes necessary adjustments uh, to what is currently in place on each one of the lots. Staff has reviewed the proposed amended final plat and finds it conforms to the single-family residential ten thousand square foot minimum zoning and also to the other city ordinances at this particular location. They all fall into compliance and staff recommends with that that the planning commission recommend approval of the amended final plat for stately subdivision lots twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight amended onto the City Council. That's based on the findings and subject to the standard five conditions for a plat. I'm glad to answer any questions that the commissioners might have.
This is Commissioner Holly. What does it, and well, I know what it means, but how unintentionally crossed by each lot? What are we doing?
Well, Commissioner, I think you know what that means. Somebody built a little too close to a property line, maybe, with a building or their home and unintentionally did it. And it was missed, you know? Um, so they're just trying to get it all corrected. They've known they've had this for a while and they're just finally got together and said, hey, let's get it amended. Because again, it'll come to effect and Commissioner Musso understands this probably more than the rest. On appraisers will come in, if they find something too close, they'll raise a red flag. And that could hold up a sale or refinance. So they just want to get it cleaned up to put everything in its proper order.
Okay, so that's all they're doing is just re-establishing the correct, uh, property lines?
Correct.
Okay.
All those houses up there are at least thirty years old. And they've been there forever.
Yeah, up around the bend there.
Yeah. Yeah, so somebody probably encroached on a, with a fence or something like that, it looks like, you know, it's, it's it's just what it is, the way it is now. So.
Yeah, we, we could have done a bunch of, you know, uh, property line adjustments, but I like this much better. It's cleaner on, on future sales anyway than the property line adjustments. And, uh, so that's why they're here.
Appreciate your comments, fellas. Thank you.
Questions for staff? This is a public hearing. Do we have comments, public comment on this?
There are no public comments on this item.
With no public comments on item seven B, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing. So, move.
I'll second. This is Commissioner Musso.
Mr. Hanson? I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson and a second by Commissioner Musso. Uh, public hearing in favor, Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Musso?
Aye.
Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzon-Fu?
Aye.
We'll miss you that time. Commissioner Fitz on as well. Uh, public hearing is closed for seven B. Further discussion and/or motion for the plat amendment?
This is Commissioner Hanson. I don't want to assume anything, but the four people that live there now are all on board with this, is that correct?
Yes, and they also have to sign the plat, so.
Okay.
Not, uh, so, I'm assuming they are as well, but they do have signatures on the plat, so.
Alright.
They'll have to, they'll have to be somewhat on board.
Yes.
This is Commissioner Holly. I'd like to make a motion on item seven B on tonight's, uh, agenda, that we recommend to the City Council approval of the amended final plat for the stately subdivision lots twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight amended based on the following, uh, original findings and subject to the, uh, original conditions listed below.
Commissioner Hanson, I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, uh, in favor of the amendment, um, in favor, Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzon-Fu?
Aye.
Mr. Musso?
Aye.
Mr. Smith, aye as well.
Commissioner- Commissioner Smith, I just, I actually just realized this. Um, I don't have any financial interest in this, but um, I do know a couple of families that are, um, you know, that own those lots. So I'd just like to point that out, just, just for the record. I just realized that. I didn't realize, you know, that that was something. So.
No, appreciate it. We'll make sure that's noted on the, on the item.
So if they're not on board, talk to Van, right?
Aye.
Okay.
Item eight A, this is a public hearing for consideration and recommendation of City Council for a zone change request, Z dash twenty dash twenty. To change from RA half residential agriculture to R one, one fifteen. Uh, single-family residential minimum lot size fifteen thousand square foot lots. This is located at twenty-nine hundred South Noble Drive. The applicant is Barbara Potten. Okay, as stated, applicants request approval to change the zoning of approximately five point zero acres. Now, the request to change, as stated also, is from the RA half residential agricultural half acre zoning to the proposed single-family residential fifteen thousand square foot minimum, R one fifteen zoning designation. The R one fifteen request is for the purpose of developing the five acres into a future residential development. This particular location has a general plan use designation of very low density residential. Um, the surrounding zoning to this parcel is R one fifteen to the west and south, open space to the east, and R one fifteen and open space to the north. Staff has no concerns with the proposed zone changes outlined, but we wish to point out that the state's new LID drainage standards will be adhered to as part of this, as this parcel moves forward through the development stages. So with that said, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of Z dash twenty twenty for the zone change request from residential agricultural half acre minimum RA half to the proposed single-family residential fifteen thousand square foot minimum, R one fifteen zoning designation onto the City Council, and that's based on the findings below. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. Let me see, I'll try to even bring this up for you um, here as an aerial.
Wait a minute, did I just see a monolith? No. Never mind.
Auntie. It's this parcel, I'm going to highlight it out in blue. And just so you have that, that's the five acres that we're looking at. And Noble Drive leads up into it. So just so you know where we're at.
So Drew, if they develop that, would they have a secondary egress in?
This one probably won't need it because I think there's only five or six lots max on this anyway. Um, they've already met with the Hillside Committee.
Okay.
And, and their recommendations were pretty, you know, mi- minimal, but they'll be, be showing up if this zone change goes through. You'll see those, uh, minor adjustments the Hillside Board wanted to put on it um, at, at a preliminary plat stage.
Well, it wasn't very steep, it's not very steep up there, at least where it goes into Noble Drive, it might-
There's a goalie is what, you know, actually a depression through here.
Okay, okay.
And so that, that's more like, it's not so much the steepness, but it does fall on the hillside. But it's mostly through this area here is a big depression.
Okay.
And so I think they're going to have four lots over here and then one that'll have a long driveway to get here, as I remember, but you'll see that at the preliminary plat stage.
So, and there's where that's, that white is, it's, looks like it's a burnt down building is what it'll look like.
Yeah, it's basically just this concrete pad, if I remember right, and some stub walls on it.
Drew, can you page out a little bit, zoom out a little bit, so I can get relationship to Majestic and, uh, Washington Fields Road? Okey dokey.
Yeah, so here's the field, there's the new school.
Yeah, yeah.
Then come down Majestic and then you take a left on Noble Drive and it's right, and I'll highlight that out again for you.
Yeah, no, I got it. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this point?
Well, I, I, this Commissioner Holly, I looked at, uh, my wife and I looked up at building up there, buying a lot up there a couple of years back. And the soil was pretty, uh, sketchy up there. Blue clay and so on and so forth. Uh, is that our concern? Uh, the, the soil conditions, uh, as they develop this, they've got to get geo- geological surveys done and such?
Well, that'll be part of, yeah, any preliminary plat, they always have to get, you know, take care of drainage and also look in the soils.
Okay.
In fact, there's a report that goes with every final plat of soil studies.
Okay. Thank you.
That'll be addressed at that time. Um, this, there's not any comments right now, this is a public hearing, so if there's any public comment, I would love to hear that.
A comment? Um, from a John Price. He writes, a significant portion of the property in question rains right next to our property. I'd like to understand how the change in zoning will impact the plan for adequate water drainage for the property. While it does not rain often, the storm of a few months ago demonstrated the reality of sudden and significant rain. Will the increased density require an additional entrance exit into the property? We are concerned about potential of increased traffic, construction noise, and dust that is chain, that this change would incur. When will we be able to see the plans for the property? How many lots, layout, etc.?
Um, I guess I'll answer the question a little bit. Um, drainage will be, will be addressed during the construction. Um, this is a zone change, so it would happen at the preliminary plat stage. Um, and I'm on the Hillside Board, and if I remember right, I, I think it's more of a topa- topograph, topography issue for the fifteen thousand, not a, um, and lot size, I think lot sizes are still fairly large in, in almost all aspects there. It's just that there's topography issues that they are working around to, to make it a little smaller lots. I guess the applicant wants to address any more than that, they can as well.
So, you know, Drew just changed, just so we can see, it's our one, one half. Um, if the if you're going from a five acre parcel and there's only going to be five lots on it, is that what you said, Drew? You thought?
I can't remember if it was five or six. It's not, I mean, it may be a few, it, it, I can't remember. Brandon, do you remember?
Yeah, seven lots.
Yeah, I, this is, this is Brandy Walker, I'm on the line representing the applicant. It is, it is seven lots and they are all much larger than the base zone of R one fifteen. The reason being is there is hillside- And they are all much larger than the base zone of R one fifteen, the reason being is there is hillside area. And hillside has asked us to pull, hillside committee kind of pull that oak, that protected area out of the lot. Even then, they do still meet the R one fifteen minimum zoning requirement.
So it's basically.
They are proposing setting.
Okay, it just, they just wouldn't meet the R one half, it wouldn't be twenty-two thousand square foot lots. Some of the lots might be less than twenty-two thousand square feet essentially, is that how I meant?
Correct, we, that, yeah, the adjacent zoning is actually R one fifteen, so to be consistent with it. We just followed suit, even though our lots are on average larger. Cause with the seven lots on five acres, the, the density there is a lot larger than R one fifteen.
Yeah, exactly, okay.
Can I add something to, we've already seen a preliminary drainage study for this. And they, they've addressed how they're gonna handle it, so it will be addressed later on, like the final drainage study before they submit with, along with the LID. The low impact development, so, yeah, we, we've, we've been in contact and working with them already on this, how it'll be addressed for the drainage.
If there are no other public comment, I'd close the public, I'd like to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Hanson, so moved.
Commissioner Musso, second.
Motion by Commissioner Hanson, a second by Commissioner Musso on the public hearing, um. Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Musso?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzon-Fu?
Aye.
Mr. Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Smith, aye, the public hearing is closed, further discussion with the commission, um questions for staff or the applicant. On this and or a motion.
I have no questions.
I have none, this is Commissioner Hanson, uh I make a motion. On item eight A, that we recommend to city council the approval. For the zone change request, Z twenty dash twenty to change from RA half residential agricultural. To R one fifteen, single family residential, located twenty-nine hundred, approximately twenty-nine hundred south noble drive. Subject to the conditions and findings in our staff report.
Commissioner Holly, I second that.
I have a motion and a second in favor of recommendation of approval, uh Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Musso?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzon-Fu?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes unanimously. Item seven B, this is a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to city council. Uh, zone ta- zone change request, Z dash twenty dash twenty-one. To amend the Crimson Park Townhomes PUD planned unit development to request approval to build four units. And reduce an adjacent fourplex to a threeplex in the future expansion area previously labeled. The applicant is Ryan Thomas with Development Solutions.
Commissioner Smith, I, I believe you said item seven B and this is actually eight B.
Thank you for the correction, eight B.
Thank you.
See how long you want to stay, work our way backwards again.
No. Moving on.
Alright, thank you, the applicant has stated request and approval to amend the zoning of approximately thirteen point five six seven acres. The requested change is from the current pit planned unit development, PUD residential to the proposed amended PUD. Planned unit development residential, and they are using the multifamily development standards as part of the PUD zoning. The amendment request is for the purpose essayed of adding three more townhomes within the project, the three new homes will be located in the far northeast corner. And currently, it was just labeled future development and I'll explain that in just a minute, so we're basically talking this area right here. And um, the three new units will be located in this area of the developments, which was again labeled future expansion. Uh, in the original approval of Z nineteen oh seven, this is the only change request as part of this zone change amendment. The current and new amendment request area remains a multifamily residential project consisting of. Twoplex, threeplex and fourplex townhomes with a total unit count of one hundred and fifteen units. The original approval was one hundred and twelve. Uh, each dwelling unit will have three bedrooms, two and a half baths and have a two car garage. The general plan designation, of course, remains the medium high density, carries a seven to twelve dwelling unit per acre, uh dwelling unit ratio. The original approved project had an eight point two five dwelling unit ratio, the new proposal. Bumps it up to an eight point four seven uh dwelling units per acre ratio. The surrounding zoning to the parcel is R three and C one to the north, R one eight to the west and A twenty to the south and to the east. Staff has reviewed the requested zone change and wishes to point out, uh, the item of concern as it relates to this project. Uh, the city in- ended up having the developer adjust the far northeast corner development by having alleyways put in. This was something of those who were on the commission at the time, uh remember, the houses used to have gr- uh, the driveways. Out on Treasure Valley, that still is in play here, that alley um, uh remains the same. And um, my biggest concern is, is that somehow we let that go through as a fifteen foot wide alley. And uh, we really like to have twenty feet. So I would just want that to kind of be maybe discussed tonight by the applicant and the, the planning commission. Uh, that's one thing that I saw in this and we didn't catch it on the earlier improvement, uh approval, so you can see it again here. And we like our alleys to be at least twenty feet, so I know it's gonna have to take a little reconfiguring, um but that's one of my concerns as it relates to this. And if they can't meet twenty, then I, I went down to maybe accepting eighteen, eighteen feet, but I'll leave that with you, the, the commissioners. Eighteen at least gives me two lanes of nine feet, you know, that's what we usually have for a parking stalls and nine foot wide. So you can at least maybe move two vehicles, it'll be tight, but I wouldn't want anything less than eighteen, I'd like to see twenty. Um, just to also let you know, this area on the fut- you know, why they made this future development, if those remember. We had an issue about this inter- intersection all happening here, because it, this particular part. Um, in this green was owned by a different person, and that's the Hancock Gibby family. And so, but all that's been addressed now, the hoops have given their easements. On this C one piece up here where my pencil's floating around, we've also got this easement and all that taken care of with the Hancock Gibby or. Known as the Wells Cardiff owners, so all that's been addressed, so that's why they're coming back. And now they can plan on this, in this future area, because those items have been addressed, so that's what they're doing tonight. Uh, so they're dropping, this was a fourplex, these units forty-one to uh forty-three and four, they dropped number forty-two out. And they added the three new ones here, just in taking off this fourplex and adding it. Uh, to those particular units, four, one twelve, thirteen, fourteen and number forty-five. So with that, staff would still like to uh make a recommendation that the planning commission recommend approval of the amended. Uh, plat of Z twenty twenty-one for the change requested from the PUD to the new PUD residential. Um, and taking advantage again of the multifamily residential development standards of the PUD, and that would be on to the city council. And based on the findings and according to the original approved conditions of the project. So, that's my report, I will just point out one other thing, which uh. The individual who's gonna be building the units, applied for an amendment, as you recall, probably a month ago. Changing the elevations on this project, that will be heard officially. Uh, for a vote by the city council next week, uh just because of the, the uh Thanksgiving holiday, et cetera. So they're still yet to see that elevation amendment, I wish they would have been done at the same time, but. We're talking two different entities, the one who's gonna build versus the one who currently own, and so that's the, what's going on tonight. Hope that makes sense, if not, ask me any questions you would like.
It's Drew, this is Commissioner Musso, I have a, a couple of questions, first off, um. Do they require a, does the fire chief require a turnaround there on that alley somehow?
Probably not, due that he has street access, you know, out here on the east and on the north, direct street access.
So, direct street access, but are, is there gonna be a block wall around the whole perimeter of this complex?
Well, there's gonna be a block wall here, that was the other question I wanted to, to bring up, because when we changed these, I don't know if we reme- if. I remembered if we addressed, if these were gonna be front, you know, the entry this way with garages in the rear. Or if they're gonna keep them the same, then this becomes the backyards and not sure, and so I'll have the applicant address those, those questions.
Okay, and then the other thing is, is that, so. It green infers that there's gonna be grass, is it grass or is it all rock in the common areas?
Well, we've learned by sad experience in the planning commission, green does not.
I know.
As it reflects a landscape, landscaping, which ninety-five percent of the time is a crust drama.
Exactly, and so this thing is gonna be just. Well, so.
And already approved, you know, the, the subdivision, we're basically talking about.
Yep, they're coming back for an amendment, so that, doesn't that open it up to, to, we can change whatever we need to on it?
Well, yeah, in essence, you could.
I mean, that seems to me, if you're coming back for something because you've changed it, then that opens the door that the sucker needs to be completely looked at. In my opinion, but that doesn't mean anything, you know? So, because it seems like. You're just gonna have a whole lot of rock and a whole lot of hardscape everywhere, if that's the case.
Well, the, that was talked about in the previous approval, so this particular basin right here was also part of a play area and that is because of the hash area. Is gonna be, it, it will be detention, but it will be grass detention, cause it's part of the amenity recreation area. So those areas with the hash right there, here and up here will be grassed.
So, do the, do the structures have backyards per se, such as. Um, up in Bristol Park where they have a designated little fenced off area for each unit? Or is it just go out to open common space? I mean, these are, and the only reason I ask these questions is because I see this every single day and stuff that I look at. You know, and, and. But those are questions that I have.
The applicant's waiting to talk, I, he, I just talked to him and he's, he's online, he's waiting to talk and he could probably answer your questions.
Okay, great, thank you.
Go ahead, Ryan.
You guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, uh, so the first item I'm gonna talk about is gonna be the alleyway. Uh, on there, so this is the original, uh. This is kind of, kind of what the original zone change looked like, and I didn't have. So this is reflect what was approved originally with the zone change, so when, when I took the construction drawings in, we have increased the alley. To be um twenty-four feet of asphalt with a. Another foot in the gutter, so effectively you have about twenty-five feet of uh drivable area. Um, and also, um, there was a comment about. Uh, kind of that stub street going in there, um, I talked with the, the fire chief. And he was okay with the distance, that that was the depth, that distance, he, he felt like he could uh. Know that, that, that's not something he wants to drive his truck down if he doesn't want it, and then he just turn and, and go out that other uh road. To the south. Um, regarding, um, I guess the backyard area of the unit. We are gonna provide little patios and little uh. Uh, individual private uh rec areas, so they'll, they'll be about, they have about twenty feet of. Backyard per se, it's not really a backyard because these aren't single family lots, they're uh, they're just planned unit develop- developments. And so they, they'll have a, I guess, limited common area. And those areas will be landscaped, probably some grass in there. And then around those areas will have bushes and landscape rocks and whatnot.
Okay, so what about, yeah, so what about your units forty-six to sixty-one? If you're creating that alley to twenty-six feet wide, then you've essentially destroyed any backyard that any of those units have, correct?
Um, we've already pushed the units that are along Treasure Valley Road, so they'll have about a fifteen foot deep backyard. And then that's allowed us to have units, um, was that? Sixty-one through forty-six, those are the ones you were talking about, correct?
Correct.
Um, that gave us a little bit more room there, and then we could put a privacy wall between the alley and the back of those units. Um, so that they'll feel like they have a more of a secluded area.
Okay.
Ryan, what is? That goes to a question I have, so since you took this up here.
Yeah.
Is your wall gonna be right off the back of that sidewalk?
Oh, I can't remember what I ended up doing there, I think it is. I think it's. I've got the plans right here, let me just see what I did there.
This is Commissioner Hanson, while you're looking for that, I would hope to see some sort of a landscape strip or something in between the sidewalk and that wall. Uh, coming down Treasure Valley Road. We'll see what you say, we'll see what you find.
Yeah, we have two feet of area there. Um, so we were gonna put a plant, I guess you could see those trees that were planted between the units. Um, kind of in the backyard too.
Yeah.
And then we'll put bushes in the, in that two foot area along the uh sidewalk.
So if I'm, this is Commissioner Hanson again, if I'm headed down Treasure Valley Road from left to right. And I look to my right and I see this subdivision, what am I gonna see? Am I gonna see a six foot wall? Wha- what is it that we'll, we'll look at?
Yeah, you'll see a six foot wall and bushes along a, a, a landscape strip there, a two foot landscape strip.
Okay. And then, one of the things I believe we did change was the, on the second story of these units. That elevation cha- not elevation, the bump out, those are still, I, I'm almost certain that we have that in, just from the last time we.
The new elevations commissioner have a bump out on them.
Yeah, okay.
And it's the modern, if you remember, it's that modern style they went with.
Yeah, and that's the one the city council's gonna see, right, you mentioned?
Yes, yeah, they held their public hearing, they're just in their two week holdover.
Okay.
It's ended up in four weeks.
Will there be any kind of a gate, Ryan, along there, like maybe halfway down or something that people can access to get into those common areas?
Uh, we, we did not wanna put one there, just because, um. It's a PD and it's really for the residents in there, um, and not for, uh. Others, I guess.
I agree, by the way, I didn't think there should be one for safety reasons, but I was curious if that was in the plan.
No, it's not in the plan.
Okay.
And then I also like to point out too is um that triangle piece that Drew was talking about a little bit ear- earlier, that's on the north. East uh corner, uh, so with these units also is that. Since the city owns that, we could go in there and uh put uh. The curb and gutter sidewalk, um, and asphalt on Treasure Valley. Uh, to finish the connection over to Crimson, uh not Crimson, but uh forty-two hundred. Uh, south extension up to Washington Fields Road.
How deep are the driveways on most of these units?
They're twenty feet deep.
And they're not gonna allow parking on the street, I would assume, correct?
Uh, they are public right of ways, and so parking is allowed on the street. We're also providing a, a kind of parking, uh, visitor parking areas.
Yeah, there's, it'll be difficult to park on the street in most areas, just because.
Yeah, you're gonna be in front of somebody's driveway the whole time.
But, but technically you could park on the street. You just, you only have a couple of locations. You just, you only have a couple of locations you could do that on between buildings and and.
If I heard you right correctly, Ryan, this is Commissioner Hanson, that alleyway is, you say it was tw- do you say twenty-four feet or twenty twenty-something? What'd you say?
I said twenty, twenty-four feet of asphalt with uh another foot in the gutter. Uh, so you could effectively get twenty-five feet of uh. Of uh ass or of travel way through there.
Okay, Drew, that more than satisfies your requirement that you were looking for, correct?
Yeah, correct. I just wish maybe we could take two feet out of that, throw it up on the street side and get a little bit more landscape, but. That's, but that that's more than sufficient, the twenty-five.
So how are you going to get twenty-five in front of forty-two, forty-three? Down that little short chute there, right where you have your, right where you have your marker? How are you going to get twenty-five through there?
So what I had to do on those ones is I had to rotate that that, uh. That threeplex just a little bit to the east. And then, um, I had a little, some surplus area along forty-six. So I was able to go in there and take some area out of that one.
Depending on. Depending on approval this evening, what the city council will see will be an updated version of this map, is that correct?
Yeah, I'll uh, I'll change this to look like the construction plans, um. And then if, and I apologize, I. I was, in my mind, I was thinking I need to show them what was approved approved originally for the zone change. And I did stand, I forgot to update that alley area.
Okay. What what do you think about what Drew had just mentioned about trying to get another two feet on the street? Is that something? And and less in the alleyway. It seems like that's more than sufficient in the alleyway.
And yeah, it's it's. Yeah, and I and I'm kind of fighting that a little bit because if I push it. I I need to have about twenty-five feet, um, ju- just because Chief Evans wants about that much to get his uh equipment through. Um, and so I kind of need to push it north a little bit, but not too far. For fire access, and then I pushed, I also pushed Elm Brook down a little bit. Uh. So I could squeeze as much room as I can out of there and and still give everyone a good backyard size.
For us, for aesthetics only, I would love to see the map, the, what do you want to say? What do I want to say? The minimum. Possible to meet the fire chief's. Uh, need, but then also to give as much room there on Treasure Valley as possible. That would be something I would like to see if possible.
Yeah, I could visit with Chief Evans again and and uh and see if there's something that. He sees that maybe he can help me out with. Um, I know he's kind of. He's got codes that he has to meet, so he's.
Yeah. As long as it's right to the code, like not the code and another foot, because we could use that other foot somewhere else for aesthetics or make it look better.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant and the staff at this time?
Uh, last question, Commissioner Hanson. Ryan, you you guys, did you ever consider putting a pool in this complex, or is there a reason that you didn't?
Also, I didn't, I didn't hear that. It broke up.
Was there, this is Commissioner Hanson, was there ever a a consideration to put a swimming pool, a community pool in this subdivision?
Uh, you know, we never, we never did talk about it. We just, uh, decided. Tried a, you know, a tot lot and and I think it was a volleyball court and then a uh some grass area.
I thought from the original, in that top corner up there, where originally it was scheduled for future development, whatever, until we knew, didn't, wasn't there? At least a mention of maybe a pool up there, and it doesn't matter, I'm totally fine with not having a pool. I'm just curious if. If there was a reason not to go with the pool, and we live here in St. George where it's hot and think that people appreciate pools on one level, I was just curious. It maybe I missed, maybe as Roger Clemens would say, I'm misremembering what our conversation was, but uh. I thought in that area up there, we talked about a pool. Maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, we've we've never talked about having a pool up there.
All right, this, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
We're also questions, if not, this is a public hearing. Do we have public comment?
There are no public comments on this item.
Okay, with no public comment, I'd like to close the public hearing.
So moved by Musso.
Second by Hanson.
A motion and a second, Mr. Musso.
Aye.
Mr. Hanson.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzomtho.
Aye.
Mr. Holly.
Aye.
Mr. Smiths, aye, the public hearing is closed. Um, further discussion. With the applicant and her staff amongst the commission, our motion.
It would have been nice to have seen actual, what actually was going to look like as opposed to these drawings, because it sounds like. There's a significant amount of change that's been done, especially on the north end of the project.
Is there a way, Drew, that the city council can see all of this at once? I know you said it's tricky because there's three different entities or three different things going on, but. It'd be nice if they could address it all at the same time.
Um, can you elaborate on that? Stay on trying to.
If they could look at, because right now they're going to see the the elevation change. Um, if they could see the elevation change on the same night that they were seeing an updated map, an updated plat of this. I think that would be kind of nice for them instead of, maybe they're going to think of something we're not thinking of, and they see the whole thing at once.
Yeah, we'll be able to do that just because of putting something that's under review. Um, and not, you know, following in in its timetable.
Yeah.
So. I mean, really, the bit, the only can, you know, changes is this went from fifteen feet to twenty twenty-five, you know, you just have to imagine a little more gray area.
Well, yeah, but that decreases the amount of backyards and everything else on all those units, because they got to pull that extra ten feet from someplace.
Looks like he said they pushed, he pushed Elm Brook down, which, you know, this way. Um, which he has the room here, you know, you definitely have it on this side over here and in this back area here. Um, so.
I guess I got lost in the bedazzled of all your drawings, Drew, because it looked like so much more. Every time you draw something, I'm like, ooh, that'd be nice to see that. It doesn't apply.
I better slow down.
But you're right, it's just a bigger gray line, really, I mean. Okay, all right. I don't have anything else.
Any other discussion?
Fisher, this is Chief Evans. It sounds like you had a few questions that were directed my way that I might be able to clear up for you.
Yeah, we were just talking about the alley, um, and. It sounds like you're requesting a twenty-five-foot minimum of. On the alley, or this.
Uh, so far, it can be considered fire access, especially if it has a hydrant on it. The minimum is actually twenty-six feet. Uh, you can bump some of that down around the hydrant, uh, and the space. A distance around it and that kind of stuff, it has to bump back out, uh, to meet that, so there are some uh, some. Possibles to make that work, uh, as far as it goes, but really a fire access road minimum is twenty-six feet. And then on that stub road that you're talking about, as far as turnarounds, in the uh, in the fire code anyway. Uh, a turnaround isn't required, uh, until you go over a hundred and fifty feet. And so they're uh, they're they're definitely short of that, uh, which is why it wouldn't be, uh, required.
Well, that answers that question.
Yeah, so it doesn't sound like then there's really any extra inches or feet that we can pull from what the fire chief would like. We're actually getting less than twenty-six.
Unless we don't consider that a, because of. Unless you don't consider that a fire fire access. That would change your wall. You probably would have to, on Treasure Valley, you'd have, you couldn't wall that.
Isn't it, is that radius, uh, by unit forty forty-six going to be sufficient enough?
I I would guess it's sufficient. Don't see any numbers on it, so I couldn't, but but those.
It probably would be. That looks like twenty, maybe twenty feet, twenty-foot radius? Twenty-five?
Well, we. We don't know what it is because it's different than this anyway.
But what's the, what's the reason we're not allowing them to use Treasure Valley Road then? Just because there's too many units budding up onto Treasure Valley?
As an.
As opposed to putting the, as opposed to flipping the, flipping the units and having the driveway on to to Treasure Valley as opposed to interior in the. Inside the complex, not having to even worry about the the alley.
That's initially what was presented to us and planning commission, we had to flip it around because of the. People of the traffic that's on Treasure Valley and backing onto that. We did not think that was a good idea, and so we had them turn the interior, which matches a lot of the homes that are in Treasure Valley already. That was the reason, is we didn't want people backing onto that road.
You have people backing onto the road further to the west anyway.
I know, and that did.
Some family homes.
That did come up in the conversation at that time.
You also need to realize too that this this first part is is built right now. So there's not a lot of changing that you can do at this point, Commissioner Musso.
What first part's built?
The first phase of Crimson Park. They've 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 got the U T, the underground in in the first.
Oh, you mean the first part of this P U D they have?
This of Crimson Park, they have the underground and installed.
So, okay, well, that's.
If you go start changing it right now.
No, yeah, yeah, that, no, that that that's, that's.
But it did, that did come up though, Ryan, that is initially how they had it, and. If I remember correctly, it was just the 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 number of these coming out in such a short span was somewhat of a concern. I don't know, I just remember that it originally came that way and we turned it inside.
Yeah. Okay, well, you're kind of stuck with what you got.
I personally like this one better than the other, going, like you were saying, there are homes further down, correct? I like this better, just, I don't know, seeing.
No, aesthetically, it's better. There's no question of that. It's just, you know. Accommodating a twenty-five foot, when it was originally a fifteen, designed as fifteen, that extra ten feet is. Is a lot of space when in a in a P U D, you know, that's the only thing that I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Doesn't sound like very much. It's only the width of a room, but. You know, you got to pull that ten feet from somebody and it's going to eventually come from backyards.
So, okay. Basically, three rows are sharing that, so there's, you know.
Yeah.
Three to four feet on on each one of those. On each one of those rows that are, they're going to change a little bit, so that's kind of.
So, I'm just, I'm just not a big fan of. You know, multi-stacked unit or or units like this to begin with, so every little foot in the backyard is is valuable.
I don't have anything else, it's Commissioner.
I don't either. I don't either.
Further, uh, discussion, questions and or motion of this.
Nobody has anything else. This is Commissioner Hanson. I make a motion on item eight B. That we recommend to City Council the approval for the zone change request Z dash twenty dash twenty-one. To amend the Crimson Park Townhome P U D planned unit development to request approval. To build four units and reduce the adjacent fourplex to a threeplex and future expansion area previously labeled. Subject to the conditions and the findings that are listed in our staff report.
Mr. Holly, I second that, and good job, Jason.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hudson, a second by Commissioner Holly. Mr. Hanson.
Aye.
Mr. Holly.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzomtho.
Aye.
Mr. Musso.
Aye.
Mr. Smiths, aye as well. Motion passing now, so we. Moving to item nine A. This is a public hearing for consideration or recommendation to City Council. General Plan Amendment G dash twenty dash oh seven to change from C V civic to C com. Community Commercial located approximately Merrill Road and Sandia Road. The applicant is Field Market LLC, Taggart Go Express.
Thank you. Applicants requesting to amend the general plan land use map in the area it is depicted, and it's approximately. Uh, again, at the northeast corner of Merrill Road, Sandia Road. Requested area covers approximately two-point-four-two acres. The current land use designation is civic. The applicant is seeking approval to have the land use designation changed to community commercial. For the possibility to rezone the parcel into a commercial designation. The surrounding general plan land use designations are estate to the north, civic to the east, which is the school. And St. George City designations to the west and south. The community commercial designation allows for community commercial zoning, which is C one, and service commercial, which is C two. Those are the two zoning designations allowed in the community commercial general plan designation. Staffs reviewed the requested change and finds that due to the current and future surroundings of the area, the community commercial. Would be best suited for the corner lot. St. George City already has or will be developing the other three corners of this intersection. Into commercial uses with similar C one, C two uses. Staff would like to recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of G dash twenty dash zero seven. To amend the general plan land use map from the current civic designation to the proposed community commercial. Designation in the general plan as outlined above and shown in your exhibit, and this would be on to the City Council. And I'll be glad to answer any questions commissioners might have on this proposed general plan amendment.
Questions for staff?
Drew, this is Commissioner Hanson. Is there any indication at all, um. Of the timeline that City of St. George is looking at, the widening of Sandia right there to meet up with what we've done. I'm sorry, on Merrill, of what we've done on Merrill.
Brandon might be able to answer that better than me. I don't know if there is a timeline, but Brandon might know something I don't.
I I haven't heard anything yet. Uh, I know that there's been talks, but there's nothing solid yet.
It looks like if they were to do that, they would have to, um. Uh, well, there's, it looks like there's a ditch that runs along there, and so it's like they have to put some sort of. Um, maybe pipe or something underneath there and then. You know, uh, pave that, so it it'd be, it looks like it'd be something pretty significant if they were to do that.
It is an open channel right now.
And it doesn't match up to the open channel that's there over by that, uh, in front of Lenz, correct? It looks like it's further north by maybe ten feet.
I know St. George and PRI, property reserves, are in the talks of different things. Nothing's been decided yet that we've been told about yet, so it does not match up, but I know there are some. There has been some discussions.
Yeah.
To this point.
That St. George timeline there is a major factor for me as a commissioner on the deciding of this particular item, agenda item.
Is PRI, is that the, is the LDS church?
Yes, it's a, it's a real estate branch.
Yeah, right. They're tough to deal with.
Hey Drew, at one point, that corner was supposed to have been that semester or yeah, semester, um, uh, it was supposed, that, that was where his office was supposed to have been, right?
Yeah, he ended up going kitty corner, he's over in this Lenz Plaza. Yeah, he's an orthodontist and that's where he built a, one of his offices. Yeah, he got approval to go on this lot, but ended up building over here.
Well, that's actually, that's actually Mountain America, he's a little further south.
Right, I'm just saying, he's, yeah, yeah, in one of these, I think it might even be, yeah, one of the two buildings.
Yeah, the one with the, the one with the round thing on it, I think is here.
Yeah, that's his. This is Commissioner Hanson, I have quite a few comments, but I, I have this sneaky suspicion they're gonna come out in the public comments, so I'll just withhold.
Is that a cue to move to the public?
I think so, Jason, why, because I know there's a lot and it's, it seems like most of them are gonna come out. I mean, I could, yeah, I'd just rather let the public out.
Public hearing, so we would like to, uh, hear the public comment. If we can, Kathy.
Right, Lisa Lindsay says, please do not change zone in order to accommodate car wash at corner of Sandia and Merrill Road. Robert Lee, this statement is, I have looked over the location for this proposed car wash, I'm totally against putting it in that location, here are some reasons. First of all, we have no decent places to enter or exit the car wash, Sandia is very busy street and if any exit and entrance were there, it would be way too close to the intersection. If you put the entrance or exit on Merrill Road, that isn't much better. Second of all, there's a location right next to an elementary school and there are a lot of children that will be walking right in front of this business and the potential for an accident is very high. My concern is for the safety of the children. Their, the noise level that the car wash creates will impose a tremendous hardship on the houses that border the area. Not a good business at all for the residential area, which is what it is. There is currently way too much traffic on those two streets already and I can see nothing but trouble or problems. A better location should be picked, not there. Next comment is from Tim Stuckey. I do not, let's see. To whom it may concern, I do not suppose an amendment to the general plan land use map in the area located approximately at the northeast corner of Merrill Road and Sandia Road from the civic, current civic designation to the new proposed community commercial general plan land use designation. I live in the neighborhood directly north to the property and this would ruin the character of our neighborhood. I'm especially concerned about the noise and traffic that this business will bring. Commercial zoning next to an elementary school does not make sense. This project will create major traffic issues in an area that is already too congested. There is already one car wash within a half a mile and another car wash being built in the Lenz parking lot. There is not a need for this business in this part of the city. This area would better be served by professional businesses such as office and medical buildings or a bank. The preschool was denied at this location several years ago, so it doesn't make sense why a car wash would now be acceptable. The next comment comes from Virginia Hales. She sent me an email, but she covered it also in her comment. So she has two public comments, one says to see the twelve one twenty. But then she did another entry, which is pretty much the same thing, so I will read that one. To Washington City Planning Commission, regarding planning commission meeting December second, twenty twenty, general plan amendment G twenty dash oh seven to change from civic to community commercial located approximately Merrill and Sandia Road applicant. Fields Market LLC Tag and Go. And she says, Kathy, please add the attached photos, signature sheets and comments to the planning commission packet regardless, regarding the above general plan amendment request, which I have and I think all of you received the, all of the emails and exhibits with an email that I sent you, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. She continues, dear planning commission, there are several reasons to deny general plan amendment G dash twenty dash zero seven. All revisions to the general plan and amendments for modifications to the general plan require a public hearing. This zone was previously, previously changed by Washington City Council from residential agricultural one acre lots to administrative and professional in October two thousand seventeen. Developer Fields Market LLC has displayed a large commercial sign at the location that declares Tag and Go Express Car Wash coming soon. State law Utah code ten dash nine A dash two oh four parentheses one and four oh four parentheses one. Washington City current practice of broadcasting planning commission meetings by YouTube Live is not considered a public hearing. General Plan Amendment G dash twenty dash zero seven is not presently set up as a public hearing. This is in direct violation of public hearing laws under state law. Utah code ten dash nine A dash two oh four parentheses one and four oh four parentheses one. By allowing the developer applicant to appear via Zoom to answer and ask questions, but only allow the public to view the hearing and snip written comments and not participate is in clear violation of the intent of Utah law regarding public hearings. COVID nineteen does not waive the public hearing requirement, in fact, state law says that if a meeting is conducted electronically, the public still may attend open portions of the meeting or wish to participate in a public hearing in person or electronically until Washington City allows the true public participation, I hereby request that this amendment be tabled. The general plan currently civic, the property at Merrill Road and Sandia Road currently is designated on general plan as civic. Civic use is appropriate for this location and support uses such as school, church, libraries, fire stations and similar public facilities imposing community commercial in an area where the general plan is currently civic is unfitting. Washington City general plan encourages uses and zones to logically defer residential uses and zone general plan section. I think it's, um, two point four clearly states in order to avoid conflicting adjacent land use, the pub, the general plan proposes gradual transition between desi- densities throughout the city and be no more than one category higher or lower in density. This support, this supports the conclusion that the planning commission stays civic, not commercial. General Plan two point five, according to the general plan, this area is not a commercial development area. The general plan does not contemplate commercial uses at the location of Merrill Road and Sandia Road property. Changing the general plan is in your broad discretion. It is the last best chance to do the right thing. Appropriate planning is key to a vibrant community and content residents. Once the general plan is chosen, your discretion is limited. The owner can do whatever is allowed on the plan. Please do not act on the general plan amendment. Please do not change the general plan in the future to support community commercial zoning at Merrill Road, Sandia Road. Zoning currently administrative professional on October eleventh, two thousand seventeen at six o'clock PM, the Washington City City Council held a public hearing to consider a zone change request. Request Z dash seventeen dash thirty-one to change the zoning designation from residential agricultural one acre lots to community commercial. Applicant, Washington County School District. Washington City Council at this time changed the zone from R A one to the current administrative professional. Permitted uses include administrative, executive, professional, medical and research offices, banking and other financial institution. The zone change was appropriate and much more compatible with the immediately surrounding Washington City zones. The neighborhood to the north is approximately one point nine dwelling units an acre located on a quiet cul-de-sac with custom-built homes with spacious backyards and improvement-like pools. Also immediately adjacent to the East is Elementary School, a school crosswalk is located at the intersection of three thousand East and Merrill Road. This crosswalk and sidewalk serves as a direct conduit to the elementary school. Fields Market LLC Tag and Go Express Car Wash. Fields Market LLC currently has six Tag and Go locations in Utah, with the exception of two more projects, projected location, all Tag and Go car wash located are open Monday through Saturdays, seven AM to eight PM. Please also take note that all Tag and Go locations keep their exterior lighting on all night. This would be an enormous deterrent, deterrent to the adjacent neighborhood. No, no currently built Tag and Go car washes are located near a neighborhood or a male elementary school, however, the Merrill Road and Sandia location would be. No one wants to live in a neighborhood next to a car wash and having no choice but to live with extreme high levels of noise and light pollution. The constant cycle of relentless machine sounds including but not limited to drying blowers that have powerful air fans that generate high sound pressure on section levels, vacuum noise and increased traffic noise. Light pollution generates excessive artificial light at night, is extreme inefficient and unnecessary. The stated goals for our community do not align Fields Market LLC, they do not act, they are not acting in the best interest of our community or our schoolchildren. In conclusion, we live in a beautiful community with shared visions and goals for our growing community, Washington City is primarily residential with a quaint commercial area and our historic downtown. This parcel that issue is the entrance to a very nice residential area of our city and it should remain civic oriented as contemplated by general plan administrative professional as currently zoned. It should be civic-related entrance to our school, residence and church as people enter our city from the west and south. I've also attached a signature sheet of Washington City's citizens who object to the general plan or signatures to follow. And that was also included in the email. The next comment comes from sorry, just, I've gotta make sure I'm not missing those. Okay, I just read Victoria Hales' comments, I believe. Yeah, I, I read, that was Victoria Hales, correct?
Right.
Okay, sorry about that. Get a little confused with all of them that I got. Lori Cotton states, in a block area is zoned for elementary schools, single-family homes and other residential properties and residential friendly businesses, civic. It is unreasonable and consciousful to ask citizens to endure the following, twenty-four hours of industrial light pollution, fourteen hours of noise pollution, fourteen hours of increased automobile and chemical odors, fourteen hours of increased traffic at the most dangerous and busy hours of the day and in an intersection where elementary-age children will have to cross in order to get to school. And in an intersection that are already dangerous and overcrowded. In addition, they can even prove that there is a need that is more important than the above concerns, for example, there are two suitable complete car washes already built only point three miles away and already industrial neighborhood. Dino Dash and Bubble Bath Car Wash. There is a suitable Tag and Go wash built only two miles away in already industrial area. There is a third suitable Tag and Go wash already built only two point three miles away on a non-residential road. I would also ask the board to consider that building is many car washes is likely unsustainable. Perhaps it is a luxury or a fad. The newest get-rich-quick scheme. The kind of fads and leaves that, and leaves buildings that are difficult to repur- purpose as something else. This starts as an eyesore and could get even worse. And so, if there is a need and I doubt that they can come, can prove that there is, please ask them to find a location that is already zoned for the kind of business they want to conduct. Travis Wright, Travis White, excuse me, states, I am speaking as a resident of one of the neighborhoods that will be directly impacted by any changes or development. I am opposed to the zone change at all. If, if anything, I think it's a good idea. Okay, I'm gonna read that over, I'm not opposed to the zone change at all, if anything, I think it's a good idea. I do think that the planning needs to be done with community influence and foresight to the future character of the neighborhood in mind. Car washes do not pay sales tax like most traditional businesses, thus not, they are not contributing to the community in the same manner as the numerous other options the city could support. On the matter of the traffic pool, the only realistic egress and grass are going to be on Merrill. The city is already well behind the curve on planning for the intersection and this will just make a mess into a ticking time bomb. It would be in the best interest of the city and surrounding neighbors to discuss what is the best use for that corner and is then invited businesses to develop, if not the other way not the other way around. Does the city want one potential happy business owner or dozens of homeowners proud of their neighborhood? Brittany Rivers writes, my name is Brittany Rivers. I have lived in my home in Pine Valley Estates for twenty years since February. I was here before Pine View Park, before the stores, before Riverside Elementary when there were speed bumps on Sandia. I have lived here long enough to remember when the school district fought hard to put a preschool on this parcel of land only to be torn down due to the concerns, concerns of traffic. Preschool parent, traffic stops, the building preschool parents traffic stopped the building of the preschool. Yet we have a sign on the parcel of land not zoned for a car wash saying car wash coming soon. I do not know the owners of the car wash, but I know the families they come from and I personally am impressed with their ability to build such an incredible successful building, but the repl- the replacement of this possible car wash is not only a traffic concern, but it is an incredible safety concern, especially for the especially for the schoolchildren. I will no longer have children attending Riverside after this year. That being said, I would beg you to speak to our current crossing guard, Holly Horn, who has literally risked her life time and time again at the stoplight crossing children due to the insane traffic. People do not see the children. I personally saw her scoop out a child and get them out of the road as a car came. Car took a corner without looking. Now add traffic of a car wash. Imagine the kindergarten riding her scooter home with her brother, brothers, past the traffic in and out of a car wash, lived next door to domains of family of seven children. Their youngest daughter, Roxy, is in kindergarten, and she is my BFF. Just ask her. She rides her scooter home along with her brothers, and today I watched her approach her home alone. I heard her say to her mom, she couldn't find her brothers to ride with. Go and sit on the corner when school gets out and think of my Roxy. It is not a matter of if it will hurt a child, but when. I think this matter should not be decided at all until we, the neighbors that build up the community. You have, you are about to deeply impact, have the ability to look you in the eyes, and you can see our emotion. This seems to be the deal that is already done. Why else put up a sign saying, "Coming soon, car wash," unless you felt pretty confident in the ability to change the zone? Please prove me wrong. Please listen to reason. Don't tell me to think of the taxes that will help our community, because as far as I have researched, car washes do not pay taxes. Effective July one, two thousand seventeen, Utah is enacting a new sous-tact exempt that allows the exterior car wash service. Under the new exemption, both assist and unassisted car washing services are exempt from performed exclusively on the exterior of the vehicle. However, services include interior cleaning and washing are taxable. I just made a quick run to Smith's at seven PM. On the way home, I had to sit through six green lights before I could turn left onto Sandia. The traffic came from Merrill Road to Mall Drive, was backed up past Riverside. Now throw in a car wash. It is not reasonable, and I truly hope you at the best, very least, propose making the decision until we can meet as an entire community. I know one option the owners will offer is to put a pathway behind the car wash with schoolchildren, so they would then expect those schoolchildren to backtrack up to the stoplight to cross the street. Kids are in vain if we're not backtracking, and we would have them jaywalking, and to put the crossing path back where it used to be would be just as dangerous. There is no good plan to make this safe. I know growth is inevitable. I do not want to stop growth. I want planned, smart growth that makes sense for the community. There is another car wash plan to go in behind lands. We do not need to put one next to Riverside as well. I thank you for taking the time to read the comments. Nancy Claus states, my husband and I are opposed to the zone change for the proposed Tag and Go car wash. This would be a detriment to the largely residential neighbor on Sandia Merrill Roads. Children walking to and from Riverside Elementary would be put in danger by cars entering and exiting a car wash. Increased traffic at that intersection already makes it difficult to turn off from Mall Drive, especially as school is being dismissed. The increased lighting, noise, and traffic from a car wash will change the quality of life in a way that an office building would not. Stacy Fletcher states, I live in Pine Valley Estates next to the proposed change. I am opposed to the car wash for three reasons: safety, congestion, and noise. First of all, I have many children who walk to and from Riverside Elementary School. Not only are they students, but many community members attend sports practices in the evenings as well. Although there is a crossing guard at the light, there is no supervision between the school and the light. The exact location of the car wash, this is very dangerous. Secondly, traffic is already horrible. I turn left onto Sandia from Mall Drive several times a day. Rarely do I ever receive a green arrow, and often I have to wait three to four light cycles to even get home. Mind you, this is prior to the new medical facility opening and the new townhomes selling and the new LDS temple opening. Cars are often so backed up that it would be impossible for someone to actually turn left into the car wash from Mall Drive. Cars would be forced to flip around by Riverside Elementary or the housing development further up the road. Finally, the car wash would back directly to a quiet residential area. I feel for these homeowners and additional noise, lights, and light to their homes at all hours of the day. Thank you for your time in hearing our concerns. The next one is Karen Campsey. I believe that's how you say your name. Please do not rezone this lot. The current zoning is appro, is appropriate for this area, not commercial. The lot is directly next to a schoolyard with small children walking on the sidewalk several times a day. Traffic in and out of a commercial lot would be very dangerous for these children. Current zoning of administrative would see less traffic as well as noise for the homes that have been back that have their backyards against this lot. A normal nine-to-five, Monday to Friday-type business is much more fitting for a school and homes right there. Furthermore, the intersection itself cannot at this time handle more commercial traffic. The road would need a lot of expansion. As a Washington, as a Washington City resident of Pine View Estates, I beg you to not approve this change. It already takes several light cycles to get through this intersection. Please do not change the zoning. It is appropriate zoning as it is now. The lot will sell and fill with a great business or business as at current zoning. Thank you. The next one comes from Amanda Hendrickson. I am 100% against the Tag and Go being allowed to build at the corner of Merrill and Sandia next to Riverside Elementary. Too loud, way too much traffic by the school in the corner already, no way. Go find another place to, to land, of land to put a loud, busy car wash. I've heard like seven, eight Tag and Go car washes already were agreed. There are a few around the corner, leave it be. Dwayne Hendrickson. I am very much opposed to this zone change. I don't think a car wash is necessary on this corner and definitely will bring added noise and traffic congestion. My home is located just to the north of the property, and I don't want to listen to machines and vacuums all hours of the day. And the traffic is already bad at the corner of Merrill Road, Mall Drive, and Sandia. Turning, try turning left from Mall Drive to Sandia between five and six. I've waited for light, for lights to get through. Please no. The next one comes from Annette Johnson. She also had some exhibits that were sent with her letter. Her comments are. Dear Planning Commission, there are several reasons to deny General Plan Amendment G dash twenty dash oh seven. All revisions to the general plan and amendments or modifications to the general plan require a public hearing. This zone was previously changed by the Washington City Council from residential agricultural one-acre lots to administrative professional in October two thousand seventeen. Developer Fields Marketing LLC has displayed a large commercial sign at the location that declares Tag and Go Car Wash coming soon. State law Utah Code ten dash nine A dash two oh four parentheses one and four oh four parentheses one. Washington City's current practice of broadcasting Planning Commission meetings by YouTube Live is not considered a public hearing. General Plan Amendment G dash twenty dash oh seven is not presently set up as a public hearing. This is indirect violation of public hearing laws under state law. Utah Code ten dash nine A dash two oh four parentheses one and four oh four parentheses one. By allowing the developer applicant to appear Zoom to answer and ask questions, but only allow the public to view the hearing and submit written comments and not participate. It is core violation of the intent of Utah law regarding public hearings. Code nineteen did not waive the public hearing requirement. In fact, state law says that if a meeting is conducted electronically, the public still may attend open portions of the meeting. I wish to participate in a public hearing in person or electronically until Washington City allows for true public participation. I hereby request this amendment be tabled. The property at Merrill Road and Sandia Road currently is designated on the general plan civic. Civic is appropriate for its location and support uses such as school, churches, libraries, fire stations, or similar or similar public facilities. Imposing community commercial in an area where general plan is currently civic is unfitting. Washington City General Plan encourages use of zonings to logically buffer residential uses and zones. General Plan Section one four clearly states, in order to avoid conflicting adjacent land uses, general plan's purposes, gradual transition between densities throughout the city and be more than one category higher or lower in density. This supports the conclusion that the general plan stays civic, not commercial. General Plan two point five, according to general plan, this area is not commercial development area. General Plan does not contemplate commercial uses at the location of Merrill Road and Sandia property. Changing the general plan is in your broad discretion. It is the last but best chance to do the right thing. Appropriate planning is key to vibrant community and contents, content residence. One of the general planners, once the general plan is chosen, your discretion is limited. The owner can do whatever is allowed on the plan. Please do not act on this general plan amendment. Please do not change the general plan in the future to support community commercial zoning on Merrill Road and Sandia Road. On October eleventh, two thousand seventeen, that's seven, or at six PM, Washington City Council held a public hearing to consider zone change request Z dash seventeen dash thirty-one to change the zoning designation from residential agriculture culture one-acre lots to community commercial. Applicent Washington's County School District, Washington City Council. At the time, changed the zone from RA one to the current administrative professional. Permitted uses include administrative, executive, professional, medical, research, offices, banking, and other financial institutions. The zone change was appropriate and much more compatible with the immediate surrounding Washington City zone. The neighborhood to the north is approximately 1.9 dwelling units an acre located in quite a cul-de-sac with custom-built homes and spacious backyards and improvements like pools. Also immediately adjacent to the east is an elementary school. The school crosswalk is located at the intersection of 300 East and Merrill Road. This crosswalk and sidewalk serves as a direct conduit to the elementary school. Fields Market LLC currently has six Tag and Go locations in Utah with the exception of two more projects located at Tag and Go car wash located are opened Monday through Saturday, nine AM to eight PM. Please also take note that all Tag and Go locations keep their exterior lights on all night, and this would be an enormous deterrent to the adjacent neighborhood. Now currently built Tag and Go car washes are located near the neighborhood or an elementary school. However, the Merrill Road and Sandia location would be. No one wants to live in a neighborhood next to car wash and having no choice but to live with extremely high levels of noise and light pollution. The constant cycle of relentless machinery sounds include, including but not limited to drying blowers that have powerful air fans that generate high sound pressure, suction levels, vacuum noise, and increased traffic noise. Light pollution generates excessive artificial light at night, is extreme, inefficient, and unnecessary. The stated goals for our community do not align Fields Market LLC. They are not acting in the best interest of our community or our, our schoolchildren. In conclusion, we live in a beautiful community with shared visions and goals of our growing community. Washington City is primarily residential with a quaint, commercial area and our historic downtown. Parcel at issue is the entrance to a very nice residential area of our city, and it should remain civic-oriented and contemplated by the general plan and the administrative professional as currently zoned. It should be civic-related entrance to our schools, residents, and churches as people enter our city from the west and south. I've also attached a signature sheet of Washington City citizens. Greg Anderson. I do not support the zone change. I live nearby, and a change in zoning would result in a bigger traffic problem than we already have at this intersection. Appropriate zoning for this property is open office space. Office space would have a minimal impact on neighboring residents and the school next door. You'll just give me a few minutes. I need to go to the screen where there were added comments since I printed these off. Sorry, I've got to find out where I left off. Okay, there's. Lena Nancy Johnson. This property at the corner of Merrill Road and Sandia has previously been reviewed extensively by the Washington City Council in October two thousand seventeen in regards to this property, which backs up to multiple residents and next to Riverside Elementary School. City Council in two thousand seventeen reviewed and recommended the property be zoned AP. AP commercial. Why not, after the Washington City Council had previously rezoned the property only three years ago, are we now being subject to the same, very same problems and concerns about this property that were addressed in October two thousand seventeen? This property has already been given the AP zoning of administrative and professional commercial zoning. Diane Boring states, this is a growing area with not enough services. I would love to see more commercial development to meet the growing demand. Philip Smith, we are opposed to changing. Philip Smith, "We are opposed to changing the zone to community commercial to accommodate a Tag and Go Car Wash. There is no need for a car wash in this area." Lena Nancy Johnson have another comment. Why would this be a property which property mine backs up to multiple resident home as well as being elevated by the residential homes even be given a consideration of community commercial respectively? Why would the planning commissioner, city council want now allow this type of commercial zoning with a car wash with lights lit 24 hours a day and noise pollution in full view of residents' backyards? Not to mention the concern about the flow of elementary school children. These are some of the exact issues that were discussed and voted upon by the Washington City Council. Administrative professional is completely different from community commercial. And Kincaid McColl, "Planning commission is more interested in looking at walls which surround them instead of listening to the important comments from our concerned community. Please listen to our comments with interest and care." He also made another comment. Commissioner Smith, are you listening? You look extremely interested, disinterested in our community. That's all the comments I have.
Thank you, Kathy.
Kathy.
You're welcome.
With that, I would recommend that we close the public hearing.
So moved. Commissioner Holly, close it.
Hanson, second.
Commissioner Holly, second by Commissioner Hanson. Favor Commissioner Holly.
Aye.
Second, Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Pitts up too.
Aye.
Mr. Smith, bye. Discussion with the commission.
Well, I think this Commissioner Holly, I think we pretty much anticipated the redundant, although appropriate, response from the community with regard to the light pollution, the noise, the traffic, and especially the school kids. Exactly my concerns, and I appreciate the public comment. I, I just want to move on to the point where we vote on this.
Can I ask a couple of questions? What's the proposed width of Merrill Road?
Merrill Road's an 85 foot.
What's the width of Sandia?
Looks like a 66.
So an 85 foot and 66 foot. Can you bring up the general plan as exists right now? Please. So I am paying attention for the public that doesn't think I am.
Yeah, that's pretty low.
That's why that's called a clamor, so we don't allow that in the, in the meeting. So it's currently civic and state. And the zoning is residential and AP and so AP can go in civic, commercial can't go in civic. What else? RA1 is the current zoning for the school.
You know, I have the question because, and I don't have institutional memory because I haven't been on the planning commission, but Drew, why was, why did they get voted down for a preschool there? I don't understand that.
I don't know if it actually got voted down. It got talked about because there were concerns about the, the entrance exiting for the school that they needed. And during all of that, the school just, you know, the preschool didn't go away.
I actually.
Figure with the school, it's sitting right here.
I actually remember that the school actually relocated.
The school ended up moving it to this area. So I remember it being shot down. Public Works, the Public Works Director felt concerned with, you know, how, what they were going to be pulling in and out of off of Merrill with, I think, the buses, et cetera. So the school just said, you know what? Hey, we worked it out. We'll go up here on this north, northeast end. So that, you know, I wanted to point that out too. I'm glad you brought that because that wasn't shot down. It ended up changing because they just, you know, I think they just felt it would be better up there anyway.
Okay. Okay. One comment for the commissioners that I wanted to express. This reminds me a lot of that piece we just saw a couple of months ago up on Telegraph.
It really does.
It really does. And so whether, obviously tonight we're looking at this, but as this comes to us in the future again and again, we're going to run into the same issue that we have up there that we're having here and here for the public tonight about getting in and getting out of it. I just want to point that out.
I'm sure Commissioner Hanson, this Commissioner Holly, this also reminds me of that property on Sandia or 2000 and Washington Fields Road.
Yeah.
That was the same problem there with the blind curve and so on and so forth.
Yeah, they're all, they're all really tough.
Yeah, yeah.
Access points, and they're really tough properties. You know, me personally, I, I, I concur with 90% of the comments. I wish the, the one, the two longest comments wouldn't have been, you know, somebody copying and pasting somebody else's letter together. But, you know, I, I think there's valid, there's valid concerns here for a lot of it. For a lot of it, especially the, the light pollution and, and those things. So, and you know, I, I have no problem with it being AP. You know, as far as professional offices or something like that, you know, which would be an appropriate use, you know? But I'm just not quite on board also with, with the, the Tag and Go. You know, as, as much as I like the, the boys, because I, I, I respect those guys immensely. They're both citizens of Washington City. To think that they don't have concern for kids is, is a bunch of garbage. I had to tame my words because they both have young children and are both upstanding young men and, and good people in the community. So, so to sit there and personally bash the, these individuals is, is completely inappropriate and completely outside the bounds of decency and decorum.
Yeah, I'd like to also add that too, my kids go to that school, so I have some concern there too. And so to say that we're not interested was pretty low. Lot of keyboard tough guys out there right now.
So I do want to remind everyone that this is a general plan amendment, and we know that we have a sign that says future site of Tag and Go, but this is not for them. That is not what's being applied for right here.
Right.
They want commercial, community commercial is what they're, what they're asking for. So remember that, that I, you can think that, we can talk about Tag and Go because they've, they've expressed that interest, and that's what their interest is. I also want to make sure that we remember that we are looking at this from is this better as AP as it currently is or what they're applying for, which is community commercial?
Okay, so let's go to Drew then and ask him what can be legally done under community commercial?
Well, just about any retail development. Now, the difference between C1 and C2 is outside storage, you know, of product is allowed in C2, C1 is not. That's basically the only difference between the two of them. But they're basically retail, anything of retail nature. And, but there are things that fall under the conditional use permit, and car washes are one of them. So they would not only have to go get a zone change still, go through two public hearings after their public hearing at the city council and the general plan amendment, then they would have to come back in a public hearing and the conditional use permit to you guys. So they've still got four public hearings to go through before that, that gets there, if it makes it there. Now, I will also want to point out that, that the applicant is online, and they would like to address some of the, you know, we heard from all the people. They, I just got a chat from Steve, who's overseeing the thing, that they would like to make a few comments if that's okay, chairperson.
Yes, that's definitely okay.
Go ahead, pop in Quinn or.
Sure.
Quinn, you there?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, that, I mean, just one of the things that we wanted to point out is, yes, there is, and I'm glad that you guys mentioned this, but we recognize that there's quite a few comments regarding Tag and Go. However, we do want to point out that this is just a zone change. And there's obviously a lot of other comments to address later on if we do end up getting a zone change. But, and, and we understand too, maybe the sign threw it off like Tag and Go is coming, but obviously there's a process, and we understand the process of going forward. So that was one of our main comments and concerns is just really considering the zone change more so than the, the idea of Tag and Go as a future. Like said before, the other three corners are commercial. They're St. George, so I understand that's different as well. And in regards to the road expansion, which I know Commissioner Van was talking about earlier, I have heard from St. George that they are working on the expansion of that road. I do not know the details of when. I mean, obviously that's something that could come down further as well with the expansion of that road, and I know that is a concern. It is a high-traffic area, but once again, I mean, three of the four corners are commercial. I guess that's more or less what we're kind of looking at is going in line with the other three commercial areas. That's the comments that I have at this point in time.
This is Commissioner Hanson. I was curious with just one question from you guys at Tag and Go. Do you have a way that you, you probably do, but if you share it, I'm curious. What percentage of your business on, on one of your Tag and Go units is done on Saturday as opposed to the other days of the week? Is it just considered like another day? I mean, I see them busy all the time, but I was just curious about that.
Monday is actually our busiest day, surprisingly. And then Saturday is, is more, I mean, Monday, Friday, and Saturday are busiest days as far as that's concerned.
Okay. Do you have, this is Commissioner Hanson again, sorry. Do you have any comment about the, I know this is for a zone change, but I'm curious because if it does come back to us as a Tag and Go at some point in the future, light pollution, is that something that you guys actually do? Is keep the lights on 24 hours like that?
We, yeah, so some of, some of the comments, I mean, we can address all these comments in this meeting. I mean, I just don't know if it's appropriate or not. In regards to that comment, we can turn off the lights. We do on River Road. And in comments to being in neighborhoods, the majority of them are actually adjoining neighborhoods as well. Sunset, there's homes right behind our Sunset location, River Road, or right by, by it up in Cedar City. In fact, in Cedar City, both of our locations are right by residential. So, and I understand the noise and everything like that that they're concerned about. We also have Santa Clara asked us reach recently for comments on that as far as getting despoles for them, which we got those for them. So like I said, this is more for Tag and Go, but once again, we're looking more for the zone change, and we can address those later on and concerns.
Yeah.
But we do have answers for those.
This is Connor with Tag and Go as well. Yeah, we, that's the same thing that Quinn was saying. We have answered for all of them. We're just here specifically for a zone change. Like Drew had said, that, that three corners are commercial. We're just coming to get a community commercial zone change. We're happy to answer. We're not trying to hide anything, but we don't want to drag this on for you guys any longer either. We're here to discuss zone change.
This is Commissioner Holly.
Hold on one second, Commissioner Holly. We keep calling this, it's not a zone change at this point. I know you got, and it, you know, I'm not splitting hairs, but this is a general plan use map amendment that would allow them to go for a commercial, a C1 or C2 zoning change at a future date. Again, it's a general plan amendment, because I don't want people sitting there saying, yeah, see, I told you it's a zone change. It's not. You know, it is a general plan change for a designation for commercial to allow for a zone change at a future date.
Well, that's, that's exactly what I was going to say. The first sentence of this background says the applicant is seeking to amend the general plan use map. So it's not a zone change yet. And I just, I just got to tell you guys, you should never put that sign up. That's all.
We do recognize that now, especially hearing after all these comments, so. I mean.
This is Commissioner Hanson. That's my whole point is I feel bad on listening to these comments. And by the way, prior to this meeting, we get packets where we've read and we're up to speed on this hours, you know, days and hours before this meeting takes place, but it's hard for me to sit here and listen to people say things that are inaccurate about your business that I know are wrong, that you're willing to bite your lip on for this meeting, and I'm sorry that you have to do that because it's not right.
Well, in addition, we did get, we did get those comments beforehand too, so we've read those before too, so.
Yeah, and, and either way, it was, it was going to be brought up now. I'm just sad for you guys. It had to be now in this meeting instead of two months down the road. But, but yeah, either way, it was going to happen.
Can you, can you hear me? If I'm, I'm unmuted right now?
Yes.
Okay, this is Greg, this is Greg Whitehead. I'm the owner, current owner of the land, and I'm working with Tag and Go. I just wanted to make a point that we're working with Tag and Go for a portion of the property. It's not the entire property. And so the reason for the general plan amendment is to go to, to neighborhood commercial. And, you know, it's funny, neighborhood commercial tends to be mildly controversial, which you've, you know, pointed out the, the three different areas of Washington, you know, Washington Fields Road and this one. But the whole point of neighborhood commercial is, is indeed to tie together the residential with the areas that have heavier traffic. And so I think it's important to realize Merrill Road is, is a major road, an 85-foot road. And neighborhood commercial does have a natural flow into the residential portion of the city. So, you know, we've been, we've been approached by several types of businesses on, on all of the pieces that we've talked about. But specifically, you know, you, you get daycares looking here, even, even next to car washes. You get, you know, sports stores. You just get a whole bunch of small retail. You know, we probably will have, still have medical office want to go into the retail setting. That's still appropriate. And those, those, those will come in. So across the street at the Lynn's, you have Simster. I mean, tho, those types of businesses will inevitably be here. You know, Tag and Go has expressed interest for a portion of this property, and they're obviously the most visible currently. But overall, the neighborhood commercial zoning is what we are going after, and I do feel like it does fit the flow of the city here. Other, other people may disagree, but neighborhood commercial is a gentle movement in, from heavy commercial into neighborhood residential.
Okay, I need to, I need to point something out of here again, Greg. You, you kept saying neighborhood, 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 but your application is for community commercial.
Yeah, I, I understand. So what I'm saying is our, our end goal. Yeah.
I wanted to point it out, those are two different designations. And so, you know, I just, I mean, if you went, if you want a neighborhood commercial, that includes AP and C1, but you've asked for community commercial, which is C1 and C2. I just need to put that on the record as, you know, you kept being talked that way. So I'm not trying, again, I'm not splitting hairs. I just want to make sure the record is straight and the, and the words used are very important.
Okay, fair, fair enough. It's noted.
Greg, were you aware that a Tag and Go sign was going up on that property, just out of curiosity? Greg, were you aware that a Tag and Go sign was going up on that property, just out of curiosity?
Yeah, I was, I was aware of the, I was aware, the day it went up.
This is Commissioner Hanson, just for the other commissioners. So what are the, the, man, I tell you. I've been on the commission now for about two years and it's very rare for me not to side with the staff. They're the, they're the professionals that do this on a daily uh for their living, and I, and I trust what Drew is saying. And 99.9% of the cases and, and the staff and Kathy and Brandon and everybody that we work with. In this case, I kind of struggled a little bit. Uh, I understand why we, we feel like it would be better in a certain situation. But I still look at this piece of property that I'm having a struggle wanting to do anything with it until that road on Merrill gets widened. Because I don't see any, just like the other properties we've dealt with that we mentioned earlier. On Sandia, I don't see that being an in and out, I'm sorry, egress and ingress or egress on anything that comes in there because it's so small. And then that leaves us to Merrill. When I look at Merrill, I think, I know, traveling Merrill all the time, I know how thin that is. It's really two cars, one on each side, and that's it. And you've got to be really careful when you're going through there. Um, and the turning lane, of course, but, so for me, I'm struggling with the property regardless of, of. What we, what it's zoned as or what the general plan update is. For me, it stops kind of right there, not knowing what's gonna come in there. I would have a hard time going, doing past, like tonight as an example, if I say I'm, my vote's for this. I'd have a problem going past that because I can't see anything going in there where it's gonna make sense, based on all the planning we've looked at in the past for traffic, if nothing else. Um, all the other problems are something to deal with as well, but the traffic thing to me and that road Merrill not being wide enough. This piece of land to me is just kind of stuck and I don't feel comfortable doing anything with it.
This is Commissioner Holly, I agree with Commissioner Hanson 100%. And then another 10% or more, call it whatever you want to. Those kids coming from Riverside Elementary towards Sandia, up Merrill Road. The road's already perilously close to the sidewalk. They're riding their scooters and their bikes. The in and out traffic from that property. Should it, should it get uh the general plan amendment and zone change? I don't, I don't know. Maybe I'm a fatalist, but I, I just, I predict. It won't be long before one of those kids gets hit by some guy or some gal in their big hopped up pickup truck. Coming out of a Tag and Go, and that's what we're all talking about here, and uh wet tires and so on and so forth. Kindergarten, two foot, two tall. No, no, I, I don't see it at all. Just don't see it.
Yeah, I, I'm a little bit concerned too with its proximity next to the school. I mean, my kids don't walk, my kids actually walk home west of the school, but I mean, I'm concerned too with. Kids that actually walk, actually, my kids walk east. And yeah, I would be concerned with the kids that walk west home. So I, I don't really know how you remedy that or how you solve that problem. You know, that, that's one of my main concerns is, is proximity to the school.
You know, I could understand why staff is suggesting to us that it, the community commercial does fit and it's best suited for the corner a lot. Which I don't disagree with. I agree with that, but then I stop right there and go, I don't know how we're gonna get something in there that's gonna work. And certainly, we can absolutely try and people bring things to us, so it's, it's not so much that I disagree with tonight, but it's um, approving tonight. Once tonight's done, I have a struggle with it moving forward, no matter what comes to us because of everything that we've talked about.
Hey Drew. Yeah, so in Civic. AP allowed in Civic, is that correct?
Well, I'm glad you kind of asked that, but I wish you hadn't asked that. Um, and you'll, actually, the way the general plan's written, if you pull it up and you see what zones are allowed in Civic. Here's what it says. All zones are allowed in Civic. Now, I didn't, I, I didn't feel uncomfortable when we went with the AP because, you know, the nature of it. But I just felt because of um the possibilities here that I just wanted to give it a right general plan designation. If that makes sense to you. I just, the comfortable, the, the comfort level, I just felt that's what was more appropriate.
I mean, that makes sense, I'm just. I'm, I can see where you're going with that. I can, I guess I have it, that's a interesting.
It is.
I'm just, I'm, I don't know, I'm, I'm really confused.
That's how I feel, honestly. I, and I, when I do that, um, when I feel that way, that's why I kind of mentioned, I feel like I should side with. The staff and their recommendation to us, and this, this doesn't solidify anything other than what's being uh suggested tonight. And there are other things in place and times in place where we can work with owners and developers and, and approve or not approve other things. But I, for me, I get, I don't know, I go back and forth on this because I, I just don't see it progressing past tonight. But if that's what they want to do and change the, the general map amendment. I mean, I guess I don't have a problem with that, but I, I have a problem with the piece of land on anything that comes after.
Well, I, I appreciate that, if you don't mind me jumping in, and that's why I, I always encourage people, I'd rather them be forwarded up front. You know, instead of having to, because what happens if you wait till all that's in? You know, then, then they have to go through this long process to even get there to get going, but at least, you know, with your concerns, you can move them one step forward. Um, and then you can hold them, just saying, hey, until these are done, I don't want to give it that specific designation yet. Um, but I, I, you know, I mean, if you feel like at a future date, if all those things are in and you then would approve it, then you see, I hope you see where I'm going with that. Seems that it might not be a bad idea to put the general plan okay, and then wait on the zoning and the conditional use permit processes.
See, but if we, if we have concerns about something going in there period, then why would we even change it? I guess is, is my question, because I don't, then, then all you're doing is, is leading people on even worse, I think. Thinking, okay, well, they changed this, now I'm gonna to go ahead and, and put a neighborhood commercial, so I want to put in my. You know, my little strip mall with the pizza joint and the hair cutting place that's already across the street, you know, that's neighborhood commercial stuff.
Totally agree with you, except that Commissioner Hanson wasn't stating that. He said, I'm fine with all this other stuff, I'm fine with all this other stuff done at that point. That's what his comment was. It wasn't that he doesn't want it at all, unless I'm, we misread you, Commissioner.
If I could say it again, again, I, I think I struggle with my words because I'm, I'm in a full circle on this whole thing. I, for me personally, if staff is recommending to me that we allow this to go through this evening, I'm okay with that. But right there, it stops for me. I can't see anything being put on this property. Um, by what, the, by what's on the table tonight, in my opinion, allows them to move one step closer to trying to figure out what to put on that property. That's all. And if they want to change the, the, the overlay and the designation of what this property is, that's okay with me. But the specific, I think, company that's been brought to the table here tonight. I've taken that out of my mind completely and said, it doesn't matter, you know, just sign it off, it doesn't matter. All they want to do is move it one step closer to doing something on this property. I don't have a problem with that, but I do have a problem with. Things coming to us in the future with this property, regardless of how it gets to us. I'm not sure how to look at this because we're having the same issue with the egress and ingress. I know, I know it's probably confusing, it doesn't make sense. It's clear in my mind, but.
But, but if we, if we change it, then we're, we're, we're not circumventing that. I guess if we don't change it, then we're circumventing it because people are gonna realize, well, it's not gonna get changed.
At the same time, I mean, I feel for the people that own property, not, I mean, this.
And I understand that too, yeah.
That's the problem I have. If that's what he wants to do, fine, but if this came to us after this, what takes place tonight had already been done. And it came to us and that was already done, I would look at this very differently and say, no, I can't, I can't look at that because of the issues that we've talked about. For me, Merrill Road is the biggest and the entrance and exit, it's just.
Yeah, it's huge.
So tonight, it doesn't, I don't feel like tonight for me is, is making a huge difference one way or the other. I'm not approving a Tag and Go. I'm not approving something specific. I'm approving them the next step that they can try to go and make something that might work there. Which I'll have the opportunity to say no or try to improve or, or uh, uh, not approve in the future. But for staff to recommend to us that they think that community commercial on this corner is the best suited, I don't disagree with that. And I think that's the ultimate question tonight, what we're trying to approve or not approve is just that, a recommended city council is that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more inclined to say that neighborhood commercial is probably a better, a better fit for this corner than community commercial. But based on what Drew read to me. I think Civic is the worst zone that anyone would want there. Based on the definition that I heard. To be honest with you.
No, you're absolutely right, because Civic is so limited to those more public used facilities or, or uses. And I mean, public like not, you know, just not commercial, but it's just used for, again, churches or fire stations or. So on those kind of uses as it's, you know, called out.
I guess what I'm saying is, whether it comes to us as something that's zone Civic or community commercial. It doesn't matter to me that one of those is gonna come to us. But what matters to me is that whatever comes to us, I'm gonna have a problem with because I can't get past the things that have been talked about.
Right, but, but now you're saying we're, not only are you taking another property owner, but an entire other city. Is, is running, is running this in intersection.
I know, and that, that's unfortunate.
That's not appropriate either.
That's not appropriate, but it's fact of life, Jason, in all honesty. We don't have any control over what Saint George City does.
George has all the, the community commercials because they will not develop this side of the road. They won't even attempt to do it. That's, that's the reason. They're, they're terrible neighbors. They, they don't even think that Merrill Road should be a 60 foot road.
I think that's a gamble that the purchaser of the property made when they bought it.
Oh, I, I understand that, but, but they're not in any hurry because. Because PRI is not in any hurry and neither is the city, neither is. Expense, it's not, there's no benefit there for them. They have access all the way around it.
It's, it's PRI that's probably the holdup more than anybody.
It's not. It's just as much Saint George City than it is PRI. Saint George City could go in and pipe that right now. And, and provide access to people of the community and provide a reasonable access, which they should do, but they will not do it.
That puts, for me, that's, I agree with what you said, 100%. That puts this property in 100% jeopardy for any development for me. And that's what I'm saying, is whether, no matter how it comes to us, I'm, I have a major issue with it. Just the logistics of that piece of property, same with the one on Telegraph that we, we talked about, same with the one on Washington Fields Road down the street. So that's, that's why, I mean, that's why tonight I'm like, okay, whatever, but it's after tonight where it's, it's gonna, it's have a hard time getting through my mind. And it's unfortunate, but that's, that's how I see it. And there's no way I can improve something detrimental to our city. Because somebody else won't do something. That, that, I can't see myself doing that.
Based on definition, improvement on Barrel Road is already done for, for that project.
It is, it's completely.
That is all they're required to do, that is all that, that is 100% done.
You mean to the city of Washington?
Pertaining to that, if it was, if that was Saint George or if both sides were Washington City, that side, they don't have to develop the other side.
Right.
That's the, that's the responsibility of the property owner on the other side. Drive down Mall Drive in Saint George. That's the reason that you go to a one lane traffic right before you get to the bridge. It's not because no one's there. It's because the person that owns the property hasn't developed his portion yet.
Do we know how long it would possibly take for that side of the road to be developed?
It could be next week, it could be 10 years, could be 20 years. The property owner on that side works on their own time frame, I'll just put it that way.
Okay, fellas, but in the meantime, we're considering.
What is the best use for that property as the, from a general plan perspective?
Yep, yep, that's, that's what we're here for. And like Commissioner Hanson says, the rest of it's gonna come before this commission, and at that time, we can decide. Yay or nay, send it on to the city council or not, um, or table it or, or vote it down. But tonight, we need to consider whether or not we're going to amend the general plan.
I guess first off is, do we, I mean, as one of the, the comments said. Are we really violating state law as far as not letting the public participate other than submitting comments?
No, that's, that is.
Participation.
In my opinion.
It's so it doesn't have to be like an interactive sort of participation.
In my opinion. There is no public clamor, so, so some of those comments are actually, like the one at the end towards me. That is actually public clamor, it shouldn't be allowed at all.
Well, and not only that, not only that, but in our commission meetings, we try to hold these people to three minutes. Um, some of those comments were way longer than three minutes, so we've given them their opportunity. It's, it's well posted, um, considering uh coronavirus and all the other restrictions that are, that are state mandated. We, we've given the public the opportunity. Thousands of people have seen that Tag and Go sign and, and, and. 30 chose to comment, so we, we've given the public the opportunity to comment and, and we heard what they had to say. We knew what they were going to say. So, we, we, we just, seriously, fellas, we need to decide whether or not we're gonna amend the general plan. I think public comment is still open, is that right, Commissioner? Been so long ago, I couldn't remember.
In fact, you motioned to close it.
Good for me.
Just trying to pay attention.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I don't know what to do, uh, other than, I, I want to by default go with staff's recommendation and go from there. Because if, I guess the question is, is Civic the best for this area? If it's not, then we're gonna vote yes tonight. If Civic's not the best area, then we're, I'm sorry. If Civic is the best, then we vote nay. If the Civic is not the best, then we vote yay. Is that as simple as it is?
But it already has a commercial zone attached to it, a partial commercial zone, you know, AP. So, I mean.
Drew, I'm gonna look to you for advice in this.
Um, I, I could, I could. Go either way with neighborhood commercial, giving APC1 zoning. Um, you know, they've asked for the community commercial. Um, if they are serious about trying to do a Tag and Go in there, it fits in a C1 with a conditional use permit. It would be in a C2, it would still be a conditional use permit. And if that's, you know, and again, most of the C1 was what should probably be more appropriate as a whole on there anyway. Um, so, I, I, I know that I beat around the bush, but neighborhood commercial, I think, fits what they. Still want to do as a general thing and what we'd probably approve, and that could be done in neighborhood commercial. So if they are willing to accept that, you know, either you can ask them or the council can to go for that, then you can make your motion accordingly.
Hey, this is the landowner, and I, I'm, I'm perfectly okay with a neighborhood commercial designation over a community commercial.
And, and that's what I think you should do. I think you should come back to the building department and, and change your request for uh, for. Changing the general plan, change it to the neighborhood commercial.
Well, hey, well, can, count, uh, Commissioner, if they're willing to do that, you could make that part of your recommendation on the city council.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay, so Drew, so then, just for public comment's sake, what can be done in neighborhood commercial? What types of businesses and what types of things can? What types of businesses and what types of things can be, is found under neighborhood commercial?
Well, again, you have the two zones are possible that they could apply for. One, they already have, the AP is already there. That's one of the options in neighborhood commercial, and then C one, you know, which is your service.
Uh, let me grab my book. Okay, so that, so under a C one, then they could have the dreaded, and I hate to even mention the word, gas station.
Um, let's, yes, it's all conditional use permit, though.
Oh, CUP, though.
Again, the C two, what the C one is, is all retail, but in, on enclosed buildings, basically, except minus the gas station, but C two allows you for like a, to have, you know, retail, but have outdoor storage, i.e. a lumberyard, where you have the lumber stacked outside. I'm saying, that's what C two, you know, allows more that way of outdoor storage along with the retail. C one is all, everything has to be basically inside on the retail side, except for the gas.
So would C one shut out, I guess, the tag and go?
No. It can go in C one or C two, it's just, it's under conditional use permit in either one of those zones, so they could fit, and I think that's why Greg Whitehead came on and said he's fine with going with a neighborhood commercial, because it still meets, I think, what their plans and hopes are.
So then would the motion be that we recommend to the city council changing the general plan from the CV designation to a neighborhood commercial?
That's what you could recommend to them. Now, the application's gonna stay the same, but again, you're not up zoning, you're down zoning, you know, or you're down designating, not up. Now, if you were going up designating, then I would say you're gonna have to send them back through the whole process.
Right.
But it's going back the other way to at least, you know, it's more restrictive going back. And so, you can, you can make that as, you know, saying, we don't feel a community commercial is appropriate, but the applicant's agreed, and we would like to recommend that it be a neighborhood commercial.
But, okay, so here's the other question then. So if, if we say that it's neighborhood commercial, and we zone it as that, when the people come in with a, with a proposal, do they even have to come in, or is it because it falls within the zoning regulation, they can do it?
Uh, they still need a.
Yeah, let me just, let me clarify it real quick. If they come in with an AP use, they're, they're good to go. They don't need to do anything with you or the council.
Right.
But if they want to take, try to get a benefit of the C one zone, which is the other option you have in neighborhood commercial, they would go for a zone change to C one, and go through the public hearing process.
Okay, so they'd still have to go through the public hearing process?
C one uses, yes.
Okay, and, and right now, if they came in with an AP, it's just, they'd get it anyway. It's not, they don't have to come before us.
Right.
Right? I mean, if I wanted to put a, a, a small office building there, I could.
Yeah, he would just have to come in and get site approval, basically.
Right, right, but it's not, okay, I get it.
If we've discussed this long enough, I'd entertain a motion.
This is Commissioner Holly. I'd like to make a motion on item nine A that we send on to the committee, the, the city council, recommendation that we amend the general plan land use map in the area approximately northeast corner of Merrill Road and Sandia, approximately two point four two acres from the current designation CV to the new designation neighborhood commercial, and not the community commercial, which is listed under the staff recommendation.
I have a motion.
With that motion, the way it's worded, that is still the recommendation by staff, even though you've changed it, is that correct?
I'm fine with that.
This is Commissioner Hanson, I'll second that motion.
Motion and second. Do I have a question on the motion? If not, Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Hanson.
Hanson, sorry.
I vote aye based on the recommendation of staff.
So did you say aye?
Yes. Aye.
Mr. Musso?
Nay.
Mr. Fitzon-Fu?
Say nay.
Mr. Smith, I'm aye. And the motion passes three to two.
Now, if I may, just let everybody listening and those who know that the council will hear that on January thirteenth of twenty twenty-one, because there is no meeting, um, at the end of December because of the Christmas week. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that is the, that concludes the meeting tonight. Um, any additional comments from staff, anything that planning commission needs to know, be aware of?
This is Commissioner Holly. When is our next commission meeting then? January sixth?
January sixth. Will you be with us or not?
Um, I, I, uh, no. No, I, I better say no. Um, I, I, I don't know if you've talked to the other commissioners or not.
No, go ahead.
Uh, I'm, I'm moving, I've sold my house. My wife and I are retiring. Thank you, Brian, by the way. Um, I got the price, I got the price you suggested.
Good, good, good for you.
Uh, actually, people think we're crazy, but we're moving north, we're moving to Salem, Utah, we're building a brand new house, and, uh, we are both retiring. Me in three weeks, my wife the end of next school year. So we've got, we've got a rental property out by the new airport, which means I'll be living in St. George until our new home is built. And, uh, that precludes me from being part of the Washington City uh, planning commission, because I don't live in the community. Regretful, I love you guys, I, I really do. The man who said Jason wasn't paying attention is totally out of line. I, I honestly believe that all, all of us have the best interest for this community, and our kids, and our neighbors, and our, and our, the members of the churches, and the landowners, and and all of that. I, I have goosebumps right now. I honestly believe in this, in this commission, and, and our intentions. And, and I believe in staff and, and Kathy, and, and what we're trying to do, and what we're trying to build, what we're trying to preserve. So build and preserve at the same time. God bless you, fellas, and ladies, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Keep up the good work, and it has been my honor and my privilege to learn and, and, and be part of this commission. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Molly. You've helped out, and, uh, vital asset to your community, and, and you should be thanked and for your time and, and service, and, and we appreciate it. It's, it was an honor to get to know you, and, and, uh, hope to stay friends, and, and even though it might be a long distance, continue to have a relationship, and, and we've, even, I've enjoyed to get to know you for sure.
Thank, thank you, Jason.
See, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't have helped you if I'd known you were gonna move north. You know, so, you told, you told me you guys are gonna build down here.
And God bless my wife, she came in one day and said, we're moving to Spanish Fork. And I said, Kim, you don't even know where Spanish Fork is.
The problem is that, you, you think the traffic is bad on Merrill Road, wait till you get up there.
Actually, we're moving into Salem, out in the, uh, out in the farm country out there, so it won't be as bad, but I know exactly what you're saying. And the snow and the weather, and it's, it's, uh, it's just time to do this, so.
Well, good luck.
Well, I'll miss you. I, I'll miss your open mindedness about, um, you know, some of the things that have come up in, on the planning commissions.
I appreciate that, Ben, thank you. Commissioner Fitzon-Fu, thank you very much. If we could have just told, taught, taught Rick Henry how to say that, I would have felt like we really accomplished something.
Now you're making me step up to the plate.
Yeah, I, I was thinking of you, Doug, if, you're, you're on deck.
I guess so.
So don't screw it up.
So we do, do we have a replacement coming up, or it's gonna be a little while?
Uh, that's the mayor, the mayor, uh, sorry, I'm, I've lost screen. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, my, for some reason, I timed out on my screen, but it stayed. Um, the council will do that, he's aware um, of the things that are happening, so we've, you know, um, also, Brian's seat is up in January, I just let him know tonight, he, he, he wasn't aware that he was actually filling in for Rex's portion, so he's the one who comes due, so I told him to put in if he wants to re-up and ask for another term. So he's gonna get his application in, and, um, so, but yeah, the mayor's aware that, uh, Commissioner Holly's moving, so um, we'll, we'll go that direction, so.
Last but not least, I'll bring this tablet by and drop it off.
Hey, I just have a question. Drew, can you educate us a little bit about a lot of those comments tonight were saying, you know, we're doing something that's illegal and all this garbage? I didn't give second thought to it, because I assumed that all that's covered in depth before we see anything. Is that a safe assumption?
That's safe, to, to our understanding, and I know Jeff, I hopefully he's still online, and he's been on board with what we've been doing. We read the governor, and again, they're reading out of the state code, and you know what, under nor, normal life and circumstances, yeah, probably wouldn't, but the governor came out when this pandemic hit and gave relief on open public meeting laws, you know, and we're following those guidelines, we feel, of what they outlined when that relief came by the governor because of the pandemic. And I'll keep it as simple as that. And we've read through it. You know, we're not gonna quote this, the current state law, but we're reading from the governor's relief on that. You know, that came out because of the pandemic.
Aren't they about?
Some of the comments made, that they said the applicant gets to be on, on Zoom. No, the applicant is not on the Zoom. The applicant has to watch YouTube, and they call in on a, a line we've given them. So they don't have any advantage seeing you guys directly on Zoom, or you seeing them on Zoom. In fact, I don't think you've seen them anytime that you've been a commissioner, you know, showing up, you've heard them on the phone, and that's it. And they are the applicant. They're the ones who need to ask questions. Go ahead, Ben.
At one time, didn't we allow the general public to come in to the council chambers?
We still do. They just can't, there's no microphone, though. And they have to follow all the protocols with the masking, the distancing, and that's why we didn't set up a microphone. Having people speak into a microphone, pass them germs, so that's why we just felt appropriate not to have microphones in there. So they, people can walk in here who may not have the, you know, the opportunity to view YouTube, say they don't have the electronic capabilities. They can come to city hall at every meeting, city council or planning commission, and sit in that chamber and watch the events as they take place. Just like, you know, we are looking at each other now, the TVs are lit up in there. In fact, I think Commissioner Musso's been in that room, so he knows what it's like with the TVs lit up, and it shows you guys, just like you see right here. So they're, they're, you know, they have, everybody has an option to see and hear the, the meeting in one way or another.
Okay.
And they actually have more time to turn in public comment, because we opened it up on Friday afternoon. When the packets go out, the public hearings are basically open. And we tell that when we send out the, the notices for them that with, that into three hundred feet, they're told they can go on from Friday till you close them on Wednesday night. So we're giving people more time to turn in comments than they normally would on a public hearing night, when they have to wait for that item to open up, you know, on that agenda, and then you close it. That window's very small. Now we're giving them days to write comments in.
Yeah.
I just wanted that out, out there on the public record, because again, there were some things said tonight that I think need to be expanded upon.
Yeah. I didn't appreciate a lot of the comments, but whatever. That's hard, hard to sit there and bite your lip, but, yeah. All right, that's all I have.
Anything else? If not, I would, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make this my final motion, fellas. I make a motion that we adjourn for this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
And second by everyone.
Okay.
I love you, Jason, really.
I, and any opposed, they can stay on the meeting, I don't care. If you want to protest, go ahead.
Good night, fellas.
Bye.